Thank you for braving it tonight. If you're home watching, stay warm, stay safe. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the January 9th meeting of the Westford Select Board, and it'll be a joint session also with the Finance Committee and the School Committee from Westford as well. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Andrea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up tonight is open forum. So we've got a couple of things that we're going to cover from here, and then members of the public will be invited to speak at open forum. We're going to have a special session, joint session, covering budget-related stuff a little bit later on. So if you have a budget-related comment, you may want to wait until we cover that. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak during that joint budget piece that'll be coming up a little bit later on. But first up, I think we want to congratulate Pat Suter on her retirement and 23 years of service to the town. Thank you, Pat. And Kristin, do you have a few words?
Yes, absolutely. Pat currently is in our treasure collector's office, and she has served the town for 23 years. She will be retiring officially on Friday of this week. And in her place, we are promoting Pam Florick, who is currently in the Finance and Accounting Department. So we wish Pam, excuse me, we wish Pat well. Also, we had quite a lot of events on Friday of last week, recognizing Pat Suter, Patty Doobie, two police officers, and a water employee. So a whole bunch of institutional knowledge just retired over 150 years, which is amazing. We look forward to bringing on the new stead. So congratulations to Pat and those others that we've recognized in past meetings.
Yeah, thank you so much, Pat, for investing your career here with us in Westford. We're so lucky to have had. And so maybe for all the people who've retired recently, we can just give a round of applause. Great. Thank you. Next up is, we'd like to recognize Lowell Five Bank, who's donated $3,000 to Westford seniors. They'll be used for the TRED program. Maybe someone can help me with that acronym. TRED is?
Tax Relief.
Tax Relief.
Tax Relief.
Something, something, something.
Okay. So it's a tax?
Tax Relief's program, yes.
It's one of our tax relief programs here in Westford. We'll be talking more about those as we talk about budget issues. We always want to try to keep in mind, folks, that on fixed incomes, make sure we've got pathways for them to continue to be here in Westford. And also, the gift will be used for transportation and food gift cards. So thank you to Lowell Five Bank for that gift. And I think there's a few other things as well.
If anybody on the board wants to go, I will go last.
Andrea.
I have a couple of things. First of all, I would like to let the town and everybody know that the DEI committee has now up on its website a multicultural calendar. It's also on the town's website as well. And for each month, the calendar will list various holidays, celebrations, and occurrences for all of the cultures that are here in Westford. And not only that, it has links to, so that you can actually link and learn about all of the different holidays and occasions. And it's just filled with information, and is really an attempt by the DEI to recognize and include all of the various celebration and holidays that folks here in the different cultures here and groups here in Westford celebrate. If there's something that's missing, please get in touch with the DEI committee. Send them an email. It's certainly not intentional, but please get in touch with them, and they'll be perfectly, more than willing and happy to add your, whatever addition you might have. So that's the first. And then I have one other announcement.
Yeah, please.
So also, as many folks know, the town late fall entered into a contract with Bootstrap to pick up your food scraps and compost at home for composting. And then, if you want, they'll return composting to you later on in the year. So I would just like folks to know, I did it. It's really easy. They come, they deliver the bucket the first time around. They send you an email or a text the night before your delivery so that you don't forget. You put your little bucket out. They come, they take the bucket, and they give you a new one. It's really easy. It's very convenient. You can set it up either weekly or every other week, depending upon how big your family is. And it's not only great for the environment, but it's also going to be, will really help the town in our budgetary situation here. So I encourage everybody to do it.
And to add to that, we were aiming for 45 people to sign up in the first, or 45 households to sign up in the first month. And we had over 91 households sign up in the first month. And if we hit a target, which I think is over 100, your bill will go down by a dollar a month, I believe. So more information is on the website. So thank you, Andrea, for bringing that up.
That's great. Thank you, Andrea. John, did you have one? Okay. Any others? Anything from the public tonight?
I have two things.
Okay, please.
Just two things. Piggybacking off of Andrea's DEI comment, just also want to note for members of the public that in concert with the DEI committee and the school department, the town of Westford will have a showing of Who We Are: A Chronicle of Racism on Wednesday, January 17th, which is next Wednesday at 6:30 at Westford Academy. And there'll be a facilitated discussion on that as well. So we invite all members of the public to attend that conversation. And I would also like to formally welcome Lori Shaw to the town of Westford. She started as the town clerk yesterday. And we'll be putting out more information and news and having her into a select board meeting to meet you all. She's getting her feet wet the next few days and looking forward to working with her over the next course of few years.
Good. Welcome. Okay. I think that covers all the open forum and announcements. Okay. That being the case, next up is, we'd like to welcome Joe and McGauley up to the table here. We'd like to welcome the DEI co-chair and the Director of Equity Curriculum Instruction in Westford Public Schools to recognize Holocaust Remembrance Day as January 27th, 2024. And welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm Joe Diamond, the co-chair of the DEI committee. And McGauley Ronan is with me today as well. I also wanted to ask Kristin.
She should be on.
Thank you very much. Elevate Angelie Rajput, who should be with us. She's also the co-chair of the DEI committee. And as soon as she appears, what I-
She is on, but no video, so we can't see her on the screen. But she is, I see her up as a panelist.
She could address us.
She could speak if she wishes, yes.
I did want to ask, before we get started on Holocaust Remembrance Day, et cetera, I did want to ask Angelie to just thank the committee that worked on the calendar. Oh, there you are. Hello.
Hello, and hello to the select board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just wanted to take a few moments and thank the working group that worked on the DEI calendar and the community calendar for the town of Westford. I would like to have a special mention for Seema Pusalkar, who created the webpage for these community events and also created a couple of months of events. And then she provided a lot of direction on how we should go ahead with that. Wendy, Magna, Kathy, Cynthia, they all contributed to this particular work. It required hours and hours of contribution, all volunteer time. But I really wanted to take the time to thank you for their contribution in this task.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. And we do appreciate being able to work on that calendar. And thank you, Andrea, for your note about it. We're so glad to be able to be here today to, in some sense, commemorate a year ago, a little more than a year ago, this committee did approve three things related to remembering the Holocaust. One is Holocaust Remembrance Day on January 27th in perpetuity. The other is January is Holocaust Education Month. And then finally, a working definition of antisemitism. All of these things, together, we appreciate the opportunity to work together with you and with the School Committee to take a stand against antisemitism. I'm so happy that McGauley Ronan is with me today because part of taking a stand is education. And in a moment, McGauley will talk about what the school system is doing and the resources that are available in that regard. When we brought this to you over a year ago, antisemitism was on the rise at that time. I think objectively, you could say it's gotten worse in this country. It takes subtle forms. It takes horrific forms. I want to thank Scott Hazelton for reaching out to us and encouraging us to join you tonight. I think it's vitally important that we never forget about the Holocaust and that we talk about not only what happened, but the conditions that led to it. And I think it's really important that we note that while we are taking a stand against antisemitism, in doing so, we also take a stand against all intolerances. And there's a lot that we can do and learn so that Westford remains a peaceable and accepting and inclusive community. So with that, I did want to ask McGauley to talk a little bit about the school system because for us, certainly, the first steps were taken when we approved those items I noted before. But then after that, action is important. So McGauley, please.
Thank you. Thank you. This is an honor to be here, representing Westford Public Schools. I'm a year and a half into this role, and I've learned a lot about the community and appreciate all the strengths here, the diversity, but also the recognition of the importance of January 27th, which was the Day of Liberation. And there were still 7,000 Jews still in Auschwitz when they were liberated. So it's an acknowledgement of that very dramatic day. An attack on Jews, an attack on, or being antisemitic, is an attack on all of us. And it's important that we start with education. The curriculum frameworks from Massachusetts do touch upon a lot of these key concepts in genocide and in the Holocaust and recognition of the Great Loss. We do have some resources that we collaborated on and gathered together with the curriculum coordinators. I also had the privilege of attending the Genocide Educator Conference this November 5th, which was a Day of Professional Learning at North Middlesex High School. And it was a day of workshops and breakout sessions and also a keynote speaker, which I will allude to in a bit. But from that experience, I was able to also gain new knowledge and resources to share with our staff. So I want to emphasize too, John Dewey, American philosopher educator, we don't learn from our experience. We learn from reflecting on our experiences. And this is a common, universal experience that we have all endured. We've listed some resources here. There are all these hyperlinks as well within a range of grade level appropriateness. And so we've been building this resource of curriculum materials since I started here and with the help of the interest of the town DEI. So we have a lot of resources here that are, some are old goodies, but also some new links. A lot of this stuff is also free, open source. And so it's great because the teachers have access to it, and it's free, which is awesome. But it's vetted well. It is vetted by renowned universities and the American Defamation League. One of the Lappin Foundation's, the other one. One of the texts that, part of the conference that we went to in November was, "You chose, we got to choose two books to take with us." And one of the books that I chose was this one, "It Can Happen Here: White Power and the Rising Threat of Genocide in the U.S." And this book has been all over the news as a reference of what are the predictors or the warning signs that we, as a society, need to pay attention to? Because there are things that we can do to prevent genocide or atrocities or crimes of terror on humans. It is a powerful read. I just finished it and had to answer some questions for the conference to earn credit. But this is such a profound book that I recommend that everyone read it if you are interested in the context of today because it starts with Charlottesville and it intertwines the Khmer Rouge, but more importantly, the Holocaust, the history of the Holocaust. So every month, the curriculum coordinators push out information for their teachers that they work with in their content areas. So some of the resources that would be listed here were pushed out and shared at the beginning of the month so that teachers have access to choose from the activities that they see are best fit for their children and their students.
With one closing word, I know you've got a busy agenda. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's really been a pleasure working with McGauley and with you all on this. We are grateful for this opportunity. I think it's important just to note something that the Director of the American Jewish Committee noted when he wrote back to me in a note last year about the definition of antisemitism here. We've learned that finding antisemitism is complicated by the fact that many people don't know what makes something antisemitic. That's why we need a definition that is in simple, uncomplicated language and provides guideposts for understanding when an event or an action may be antisemitic. The only way for a definition to work is for it to become widely used. Every endorsement, every police department, every high school principal who uses it begins to normalize the definition and also our collective understanding of how to understand what antisemitism is and what to do about it. And that speaks to me about education. It also speaks to me about understanding what intolerance is.
Oh, I just want to also mention that there is a resource called the HEAT Index. And it is a database that shows you pings on a map of where hate crimes have occurred. And you might be surprised to the amount that we see in Massachusetts. The HEAT Index stands for Hate, Extremism, Antisemitism, and Terror. And it was defined by, excuse me, mixing frameworks from here. And then also, at the conference, I was able to meet a Holocaust survivor, Janet Applegate. And she has agreed to do a Zoom talk with us April 29th at 6:30. And so I'll be sending out more details about that. But she is a wonderful source of information, and it's priceless to listen to her story. She also has a book coming out soon about her experience. And she chose the name Janet when she registered for school in the U.S. Thank you.
We really appreciate all of this. There's no better time in the world than right now to take some time and share this with you. I just want to make sure we catch the resources. So the book is "It Can Happen Here." And Joe, if people want to connect with the work of the committee, they can go to the webpage, on the town webpage. Is that the best place for people to go?
Absolutely. And then they can be linked to our section of the website, which we're constantly updating. But we'd love to hear from folks as well.
Great. Well, we appreciate the continuing work of the committee and the co-chairs and everyone who works on the committee and Scott.
I just want to, in addition to what you've got in front of you, WCVB, which channel, whatever that is, there is a news item, I think it was yesterday. There is a traveling exhibition called Auschwitz Not Long Ago, not far away. It'll be in Boston in March. So check out the WCVB website if you would like to see that. It's going to be, I'm sure, very popular and booked pretty quickly. And thanks for coming tonight. You know, Monday is Brother King Day. We celebrate and commemorate our civil rights actions. And the flip side of that is what happens if you lose your civil rights. And it's not just that, not just that 6 million Jews were murdered in the Holocaust. It is 60% of the Jewish population in Nazi-occupied territories were murdered. 60%. That's a shocking number. That's what genocide looks like. And I felt like we had to sort of, this weekend, juxtapose the good parts that we've done to America and then the risks that happens if you lose that. So thank you for coming and all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just thank you for being here. I mean, this is a very important thing.
Okay.
A pleasure. Thank you. And thank you so much for your support.
Yeah. No, our pleasure and our duty. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. Stay safe and stay warm. Next up on our calendar is to review and approve changes made to the Home Rule petition by the Committee on Consumer Protection and Professional Licenseur as it relates to the authorization made at annual town meeting on March 25th, 2023 to issue one additional alcohol beverage retail license to be exercised by NAB One Stop Shop, Inc. Kristin, let us, if you could fill us in on what we need to discuss tonight.
Absolutely. So just as a refresher for the board and members of the public at your March 25th, 2023 annual town meeting, town meeting authorized to file special legislation to support the request for one additional liquor license in the town of Westford. And then that goes through a legislative review. It's currently going through that review. The legislature has some language that they wish for this board to review and approve. In the town meeting warrant language, you are authorized by town meeting to make any changes to that review and to that language to send back to the legislature. If this is then signed into law, this will come back to the board. NAB One Stop would have to apply for the liquor license with the town clerk's office. It would be a public hearing process. It would be before your board to authorize you to or to not issue that liquor license overall. So the language is in your packet and supporting material is in your packet for your review.
Any questions or comments from the board on this?
I think, I just want to make clear, particularly because of the letter that we got, that the select board got, that we're not, so everybody knows, we're not approving the alcohol license tonight. All we're doing is just saying to the legislature, we accept your changes and revisions to what our warrant article was. So I just want to make that really clear to people that there will be a subsequent public hearing on the application for a liquor license at NAB One Stop.
Good. Thank you for clarifying. Any questions from the public? Kristin, do you need anything from us tonight other than our awareness?
I would need a motion to approve the language as was sent back from the legislature.
Okay.
There were two versions, weren't there?
So one was a very small redline version changing the number, the letter, or excuse me, the written one to number one. The more substantial change is the further redline version that I'd be asking for you to approve this evening.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the language.
So move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're all here together. That's great. If we're not, we have to roll call, so it's nice to be together. Okay. Thank you for that. So next up, I'd like to invite the chairs, Chair and Co-Chair of the Finance Committee and the School Committee, just to come up and join us here. And in just a second, we'll ask them to call folks into session. We are advancing one more step in the budget process. And what we thought we'd do tonight is just sync up altogether on what's happened already. First of all, we understand many, many people are just joining this conversation now or will be joining the conversation in the next month. So every time we get together and talk about this, we're going to try to recap what's already happened, where we are tonight, and then what the journey is between now and town meeting and potentially the ballot. So we're going to do that. But first, maybe Valerie, would you like to call the School Committee into session?
Yep. We've got a quorum. I think Mari, Marisol, and Ming Chen might be on Zoom.
I did promote them as panels.
Thank you.
Kristin, I just want to make sure that we have at least one more person who can provide.
So I have Hari and Shinji and Ingrid and-
Yep. Okay. So we have a quorum as well. So I'll call the Finance Committee to order.
Heather is also on.
Great. So there's a couple of things we'll do here. Kristin's going to take us through kind of what's happened so far, where we are tonight. We'll talk a little bit about some of the decisions that we have to make and some of the things that will happen as we go into the Finance Committee review process, which kicks off this Thursday. And then there'll be an opportunity for board members to ask questions or share comments. And there'll be an opportunity for members of the public, if they have a budget-related question, to come up and share that with us, too. So first, Kristin, if you could just help us orient what's already happened and what are we doing tonight and what's happening going forward?
Sure. Absolutely. So before you, I will be going through a series of slides that really orient the select board, again, the School Committee and the Finance Committee of where we have been on a journey to evaluate the fiscal '25 budget, where we stand today, upcoming opportunities for people to get involved and understand more information, and then actions that members of the board or the public can take related to the budget overall. So before I start, I will also just let everyone know that through the hard work of our staff, we've created a dedicated budget webpage. The budget for the town and school was very difficult to get to on our webpage. So today, that actually went live. So you can reach that through the town of Westford's homepage, www.wesfordma.gov, and get there. So without further ado, I'll go through the slides?
Yes, please.
All right. Very good. So just wanted to give a presentation overview of where we've been and where we see ourselves going. So in December of 2022, we were gaining awareness through town staff and boards and committee members that we were going to be up for some major contracts to renew in fiscal 2025. And, that should say fiscal 2025, I apologize, not 2025. And we are going to potentially see jumps of 10% to 40%. In January of 2023, your boards came together in certain ways and were having certain conversations in your individual board and committee meetings that there were going to be potential challenges. And I'll go through those challenges in an upcoming slide. In May of 2023, as these contracts were coming due and we were looking to renew contracts, those challenges became into clearer focus. And the select board took a very proactive approach to appoint a budget task force comprised of select board members, school committee member, finance committee member, town staff, school staff, and most importantly, members of the public. Throughout the summer months, that budget task force worked tirelessly and was able to prepare and present a report to these committees before us this evening that outlined those budget challenges in much greater detail, outlined some efficiencies that could be had in both town and school, and also outlined potential revenue. And these are all linked. So if you're able to get to the presentation online, if you're not here this evening, you can link to all of these documents. In October 2023, shortly thereafter, the task force report was presented. The select board and School Committee separately and jointly requested the preparation of two budgets for fiscal 2025. One was a budget that would meet the needs of our community and level service, no new employees, no new services, just level services, but would require a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, which is a permanent increase on the tax base. And then another budget with significant cuts that kept us within the Proposition 2 and 1/2 limit, two and a half limit, which is required by state law. In November of 2023, the initial budgets were presented to the Select Board and the School Committee, and then I presented the town budget to the Select Board in December of 2023. Throughout this month, January and February, the Finance Committee is going to be leading detailed public hearing presentations by department heads and having question and answers by Finance Committee members and members of the public on all aspects of the budget. And then in March of 2024, we will be presenting the budgets to town meeting. It is yet to be determined by the Select Board if they will be asking for town meeting to consider an override budget or just a level proposition two and a half constraint budget. Town meeting is open to all members of the public who are registered voters to vote, and and anyone can really attend and watch town meeting. And then if there is an override requested by the Select Board, that would be on a town election on May 7 of 2024. I just want to reiterate the fiscal '25 through '27 budget challenges. These were identified in advance and then flushed out by the Budget Task Force. We are seeing that inflation is at a generational high following a period of very low inflation. We're seeing large energy, service, and labor contracts increasing greatly. We have a great need to maintain competitive pay. We do that through rigorous benchmarking of comparable communities and targeting the average level within that benchmark group, that is for town and schools. We have rapidly growing health insurance expenses. This is not only because health insurance expenses are going up, but the experiences that our employees and their dependents on the plans are rapidly increasing as well. We do see some new revenue opportunities, but we think that they are limited and will take some time, most specifically our MBTA multifamily zoning that has significant potential growth that will be on the May, excuse me, March annual town meeting, and we are receiving proposals now for an economic development consultant to hopefully bolster some of the new growth within the town of Westford. We really see that proposition two and a half presents constraints with deep dives of service cuts. So, again, we want to link everyone back to that Budget Task Force report, which is extremely comprehensive and informative. This chart is just a visual to show us what we are seeing in terms of our contracts going up between fiscal '24 and '25. We're seeing an increase in our solid waste and recycling contracts, electricity, natural gas, and non-union salaries. We have town labor contracts, we have school labor contracts, our health insurance trust contributions, the school bus contract, special education tuition, and other increases that we have identified through those budget challenges. So, with no new personnel, no new services, and a careful pursuit of efficiencies, we're seeing about a $10 million increase in our baseline budget. We do have a limited amount of new growth in there, and we do have that two and a half percent increase that we can increase the tax base. This is just another way to show that graph, fiscal '24 budget at the top, fiscal '25 budget at the bottom. What I do want to highlight is that this is not just a challenge that we're going to see between fiscal '24 to fiscal '25. These contract prices are going to be further escalating in '26 and '27, and you'll see that through this chart and the next chart. So, it's really a compounding issue, where there's not a one-year issue that we're seeing. We do want to highlight the number of efficiencies and revenue opportunities that we're actively pursuing. We currently fuel a great number of town vehicles at area gas stations rather than at our local DPW garage, and we are actively seeking to fuel just at that DPW garage, which is quite a cost savings related to to fuel. We are looking to centralize fleet maintenance opportunities. Currently, the Fire Department deals with their operations for fleet maintenance, DPW deals with theirs, and then a lot of the police cruisers and what we'll call the Town Hall vehicles, we go out and and use labor on the on the free market and not through town efficiencies. We're comparing our fee structures to our market communities, most notably, the Health Department did adjust their fees up, and the ambulance enterprise rates increased with the market as of October 2023, as this board reviewed and approved. We're looking at composting to reduce solid waste tonnage. Andrea, thank you for bringing that up earlier, and those residential services did begin in December. We're looking at MBTA zoning and economic development. Please follow the Planning Board public hearing processes that start later this month related to MBTA multifamily housing and how we are trying to bolster economic development, not only through housing, but through commercial and other industrial resources. We're looking at how we can integrate technology to be more resourceful in that sense, working smarter, not harder, what resources are we paying for and not using, and those types of things. We're looking at shared service agreements, both internal, which means between town and school, and also external, what could we potentially share with other municipalities and see a cost savings in that fashion, but not reduce services or level of service. And we want to continue to monitor and examine our health insurance opportunities. Is there anything else in the market that we are not doing that we can help to lower those costs? We know that any conversation or discussion about a potential tax increase, the two and a half percent or more creates quite a burden for those who are on a fixed income or have other financial challenges. So, this evening, we just wanted to reiterate to the boards and to the members of the public that we do have real estate tax exemptions and tax deferral options. The Assessors Department is extremely well-versed. Many of you have received your quarter tax bill in the recent weeks and have either seen a jump or some other change. These are all items that the Assessors Department can walk you through of why you saw that change, or if you do qualify for a Senior's Means Test exemption, the Community Preservation Act income-based exemption, if you're a veteran, an elderly member, a surviving spouse, or disabled. So, please use those resources, don't feel that you're burdening anyone, or or you should be embarrassed to do that. We want you to take advantage of those resources with the town. One of the, a few of the things that we're still tracking that are variables right up until when we vote at town meeting, and even in October, when we have to adjust the budget in a, at special town meeting, is state and federal aid are still unknown. The state budget should be released next week, but that's always variable, our new growth is variable, our solid waste and recycling, we're talking about how can we reduce our tonnage, how can we use, reuse and recycle in different ways. Our infrastructure and facilities are at various stages of aging and in need of certain upkeep. We have various public safety needs. Our energy costs are always fluctuating, we are looking through AMRESCO investment-grade audit of how to reduce our energy costs and be more efficient in that way, and that links in with the clean energy and sustainability recommendations. We look at 12 North Main Street, a town-owned property that is ripe for redevelopment, that we have some influx of state and federal dollars for the brownfields cleanup there. Our Hotel Amel's excise luckily is rebounding since the COVID-19 pandemic, we were able to show some growth there in the last quarter. As today and as we saw Sunday, snow and ice is variable, and we would like to see that go much more smoothly. An override versus a non-override budget, which we'll be continuing to discuss over the course of the next few weeks. And Scott, thank you for pointing to me that we were most recently given the fair share apportionment for transportation, which will be over $450,000 to the town this year, but will be fluctuating, and then the educational component will be seen more through the state budget, but perhaps we can leverage that as well. So, the budget variables ebb and flow on a month-by-month, almost week-by-week basis. So, I think this is one of the most important slides here that we can present to the boards and members of the public of how people can stay involved and understand further of the challenges that we're seeing in the budget for fiscal '25 and beyond. The Finance Committee will be hosting public hearings starting this Thursday, January 11th, running four Thursdays in the evening at Town Hall and via Zoom. Those are all scheduled related to departments, so please see that schedule on the website or feel free to call the Town Manager's Office or the Finance Director's Office. Next, Select Board meeting on January 23. You'll vote to close the warrant, so we'll have a healthy conversation about all of the articles that we'll be seeing on the warrant. We are then kind of entering into a budget roadshow. Myself and Dr. Chu, members of your various boards and committees, and the Finance Director and I, will be visiting various groups to give an update on the budget. I'll be at the League of Women Voters on January 24, at the Cameron Senior Center on January 26, the WEPTO, excuse me, W E P T O Zoom meeting. We'd like to visit the Friends of the Library on February 1, Westford SE PAC, Westford Rotary. If there's any other groups that we should get to, please let my office know, we'd love to reach out or invite them to these group meetings. We think that co, going to where the people are i- is really important in in order to make them feel comfortable and understood. On February 13, the Select Board will set the order of the warrant articles, and the town meeting warrant will become more into focus. We want to host an open forum on the budget and where we have come from related to our start on January 11 with the Finance Committee to March 4 to further educate the public, and then we will have the town meeting on March 23 at Westford Academy, and ultimately, a town election on May 7. That election will be for certain board and committee members, but if the board chooses to place an override question, that would be on the election at that point in time as well. Again, just some more links and some resources for people, how they can stay involved, attending those virtual budget hearings with the Finance Committee, you will be able to speak and be heard. Again, we created the new budget website and issued this week. Any questions or comments can come to me, and I would certainly share those with the Select Board. The Budget Task Force and staff has created a number of educational videos that really were launching through my newsletter in December, but today is kind of the hard launch of those, and we'll get those out more readily on the social media pages, and then, most importantly, attending town meeting on March 23. So, with that, I will close my formal presentation and turn it over to to you for any other commentary.
That's a, that's a great summary, and thank you. A lot of questions that we're getting include things like, have we investigated all the different forms of new revenue that might be available, have we looked at what other towns are doing, have we done rigorous benchmarking to to help us understand what our efficiencies are like? All that information is in the Budget Task Force report. We understand that that is a big, heavy lift that a lot of people aren't going to get to. We're going to try to to make sure those pieces of information come out to you in sort of bite-sized chunks. If you ever have a question, I guarantee we're going to answer it as clearly as we can, and then try to connect you with the the backup links to give you all the information that you have there to support that. I just want to mention, Kristin did a great job, but I just want people to internalize the multi-year effect, so the, through good practice, some of these contracts that had to go up a significant amount, we negotiated them to step in it by phases. So, rather than have the full impact show up in year one, we negotiated to have part of it show up in year one, part in year two, part in year three. What that means is when you're looking at this year's budget and some of the trade-offs that Kristin has presented, some of the things that Dr. Chu has presented, if we stay within the Prop 2 and 1/2 confines, we will face that same exercise almost exactly in terms of dollar cost in the following year. So, if you look at some of the things that we would experience if we stayed within the Prop 2 and 1/2 guidelines, you know, significant number of people across the town that provide services, that same number of people, again, would be at risk in the following year because new costs are showing up in the second phase of these contracts. So, just so people have internalized that, we're not talking, when you're looking at at the first year, that's just a snapshot of year one, the same thing would repeat year two and year three, so just want to make sure people are, have had that sink in. Thank you for getting the homepage up, I think that's great, and it's, if you go to westfordma.gov, it's the top link right there, it'll take you to the page that that shares all this info. And just since we're all here, Christina, maybe if you could help us remind us just for the next couple Finance Committee reviews, what's coming up on Thursday and what's coming up the next Thursday, people want to plan?
Thursday is Public Works. Someone to help me out, Tom?
Library, Recreation.
Yeah, Cultural Library, Recreation, Enterprise, also Water and Stormwater. Following week is the Schools, the 18th is is the School Budget.
Okay, I know many people have an interest in in all of those, so please come and take part. Kristin teed it up very well, the challenge for us now is to move both of these budgets through this very careful review. One of these budgets would be the Prop 2 and 1/2 constrained budget, and where we would fight hard to preserve the best mix of things we possibly can under that that ceiling, that'll be one thing we're doing. And then in parallel, we're asking, what is the right thing, if we choose to do so, to bring before the Westford voters that would preserve many of the services, might make some trade-offs, definitely would include some efficiencies, but would preserve a lot more of the services than the Prop 2 and 1/2 budget would and would require an override? So, we're, we're building, we've got a great starting point, but we're going to be refining those two budgets in parallel over the course of the next six weeks, so that's the task in front of us. Please jump in and and join us in that. It's hard work, but it's really important work to do.
Can I just add something?
Yep.
So, the, I just want everyone to know that the Finance Committee members do ask questions of the department heads ahead of these meetings, and all of those questions and answers are also in our meeting packet, so it's, it's interesting to look through those, it gives you a little bit more of a glimpse as to the difference between the budgets and and some of the things that we've already asked.
Yeah, no, thank you, I find those really, really helpful, and thank you to the Finance Committee for their thoughtful questions. The, so why don't we pause there? The goal tonight is just to level set everybody together, since we're starting this next phase of the budget journey, but very interested in any questions or comments, first from any of the boards, and then from the public. So, I don't know if there are any questions or comments that anyone has right now, but we're stepping off into. Okay.
I got one question.
Yep, John?
Did you look at, if we did Prop, if we kept it within Prop 2 and 1/2 the first year?
Mm-hmm.
Did anybody look at what the impact that would be a second year? I mean, we've got the, the impact of going forward, and it's a $10 million increase every year.
Right.
Anybody take a look at that, so we can kind of understand the impact?
Yeah, so the departments were requested, and we have evaluated a three-year outlook in both a proposition two and a half model and a proposition two and a half override model. So, that has been reviewed. We have not reviewed what potential cuts we would make in the second year, we were really focused on the first year. So, I think we have the cuts that we would make in year one, I think in year two, we would see further cuts, and in year three, potentially even further cuts is how I would have forecasted.
Okay. You just reminded me of a great question, John. So, the, the, a commonly asked question I've been getting is, what are we doing to pursue efficiencies? As mentioned, there were a bunch of efficiencies identified in the report. We've also asked each department, as they're presenting in the Finance Committee, if if the Budget Task Force recommended any efficiency idea, any best practice idea from another town, we're going to ask that department to comment on that and speak to that and tell us how they're going to incorporate that into their planning. So, sort of one additional assignment this year, thanks to the Budget Task Force work, is sort of specific asks for each department as we walk through. So, at the end, we will have a thoughtful review about exactly what we're planning to do with all these efficiency gains that we've been able to identify so far. Okay, we can come back, I think that's what the Select Board had. I know Valerie, if if School Committee has any questions or comments at this point?
Not really for me, but if you could go back to the date slide, I just was hoping you could explain to someone watching in layman's terms what close the warrant means, and walk through what that, what implications that has on the rest of the process.
Sure.
Let me get that up.
Okay. So, this may seem a little like inside baseball, but there are a series of procedural steps. There's the hard work we're going to be doing of deciding what's in these budgets, we'll be doing that together in the, in the Finance Committee process and then a series of meetings after that.
So, closing the warrant, what that means is that no other articles could go on the town meeting warrant. So, at that date, the Select Board would have to determine if they would have a budget, a, a non-override budget, a proposition two and a half constrained budget, or an override budget. That's not to say that in the future, the Select Board could call a special town meeting within the annual town meeting, which I haven't even discussed with the board, but that is an option. It's a little bit messier, and it's a little bit more confusing. So, at the close the warrant time, that's when, you know, our zoning articles are in, our spending articles are in, our road acceptance articles are in, anything, any other housekeeping articles are in at that time. So, those are the conversations we need to be having.
And then another thing to watch is, is the specifics of exactly what we're talking about at town meeting, exactly the proposal we're bringing forward, that would be in the motions language. So, the warrant basically says, we're going to talk about it, and then the specifics of exactly what we're going to talk about shows up in the motions language, and that's set like two or three weeks typically before...
But when the, when the mail, before the mailing goes out.
Right. So, there'll be a couple of things to watch here before it ratchets down on exactly what we're planning to bring forward at town meeting. Yep, John?
Kristin, did you say that when we close the warrant, we would already have to have made that decision on override or not, when we haven't had all the budget hearings yet?
Well, you would, you could place an article on the warrant, so you could have a, a budget article.
We are going to have a budget, right?
You'll have a budget article, there could be two budget articles on the warrant.
Put two on, and then you could, when we get...
If you could take one out.
You can take it off.
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, okay, because we want to have that decision at that point.
Correct, exactly.
Yep.
And just to let you know, the Select Board in the past has been known to reopen the warrant.
Okay.
We want something on that comes in late, so...
We'll set the stage for people to get on your warrant for that day.
We really want people to be, you know, we want to close the warrant on the 2030, and it's really only in emergency situations that we reopen it.
Sure.
Right, so this may have some placeholders, but as we approach the final date, it'll get very specific, we'll pass the motions language, which will be exactly what we're planning to talk about at town meeting. So, really eight weeks of crunch time before, a little bit less than eight weeks, well, maybe about eight weeks of crunch time here, at the end of which, we're going to know exactly what we're going to plan to bring forward to the voters. Sorry, does that, does that help?
No, that's the answer, I hope for anyone else watching, too. And then I guess, I know that that responsibility and power lies with the five of you, but can you just walk through what else you might see, we might see as a joint meeting schedule, or what future opportunities we have to further discussion?
or what future opportunities we have to further discussion?
So we haven't set this yet, but what I was thinking is that we probably would come back together and have at least one joint session, and there might be more, where we take all the input we've received and at least talk about where we're landing on what the actual budget, Budget A and Budget B look like and contain. There's not always, in many years, there's not that, because there's sort of enough negotiation and agreement that there's not sort of a coming together, but I think this time, we'll need something like that. And as always, we'll try to keep all of the communication open, in addition to the public sessions that Chris and Kristin are planning. Your one-stop shop will be, you know, Google Westford, Town of Westford, MA, number one sort of flashing banner right there will take you to the budget page. Christina, I don't know if, do you have any questions or thoughts from the Finance Committee, do you think?
I don't, I don't think so. And I just want to clarify that, oh, sorry, just one second, Dennis. I just wanted to clarify that when you close the warrant on the 23rd, if there is an override on the warrant, the actual dollar figure will not have been settled on.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Just the topics.
Just the topics, right.
Exactly. And if we're not far enough along to feel like we know, we'll probably put both on and then plan to adjust as we go. So it's a superset of what you can talk about, and as Andrew brings, brought up, you can add things if you need to, but I don't think there'll be a major event on the 23rd. That'll be sort of, here are the things we want, at least reserve space to talk about. It'll be a little bit later, I think, when we decide exactly what we want to do.
Okay, okay. Can I, can I call Dennis?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions regarding, referencing Chris, Kristin's December 2023 budget report. I think one of the most important things that I think I'm anticipating, we're going to have to discuss is what the impact of this thing is going to be on the taxpayers. And on page 12 of your report, you have the upper part, you have the estimated bill impact on an $8,000 Proposition 2.5 override. I needed some clarification on that.
Eight million.
Eight million, I'm sorry. Yes, I wish it was 8,000. It would be no real problem.
We all wouldn't be here tonight.
That's right. We'd all be down at Fiva Kachina having a party. But the question I have for you is, it says here, it says here, it says, based on the FY '24 values, every $1,000, every $1 million override would cost 112 on the median single-family home assessed at $750,000, $756,000. So can you explain what that relationship is, that 1 million and 112? I kind of like, every time the override goes up to, goes up a million bucks, does the 112 go up with it?
Correct. So it's really eight times 112 if it's an $8 million override on the average single-family tax bill.
And then the last part of that was, and I'll be, I'll be, I'll be done, is in your graph, you talk about the single-family home value and the override tax, and then you have a series of, you have a series of numbers under the override tax. Is that the quarterly bill, or is that, what is that, or is that the addition to the, to the current bill?
Let me try to pull that up.
Can you describe the graph you're looking at, Dennis?
Yeah, if you look at page 12, there's a, there's a three-column graph. It says percentage, single-family home, and a single-family home and override tax 2024. So I just wanted to understand those numbers on the right column.
Maybe while Kristin's pulling that up, Dennis, you reminded me of something else, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Just something else. So I've also had the question, is this affecting Westford in some unique way? And Kristin's already busy pulling this up, so I don't want to bother her with this.
I can definitely try to.
We are tracking other communities in the Commonwealth. Many other communities in the Commonwealth are facing exactly the same issues. It makes sense. We're all facing the same inflationary issues. And so we're seeing other communities beginning to propose overrides. A number have already passed overrides in the fall. So because we're a little bit ahead, ahead of others in our town meeting, we have ours in March, many have it in April or May, we are sort of just a little bit ahead of some other towns, but, you know, Acton, Drakeett, Chelmsford, all the communities that are similar to us in our market basket are facing the same thing and having the same discussion for the same reason.
So Dennis, I'm on that chart right now. I believe that it's 25% of our homes are valued at 558,000 or less. At 558,000, the tax bill would increase in fiscal '25 by $663. At the highest level, the single-family home valued at 1.23 million, their tax bill would increase by 100, excuse me, $1,461.
Okay.
And that, that captures 95% of our households.
No, I get you. That's good, that's good. Now, just to, just to make sure that I, just to repeat it back till I have it, so everyone, every $1 million, it bumps up 112.
Correct.
And then the column over here on the right is basically what will be added to the existing tax bill. They're going to have to add this amount to it.
Right. So we would have, we would have an addition of 2.5%, which were allowed by state law.
Understood.
And then if there is an override, it would go up by that value in the right-hand column.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, certainly, Dennis. And just, just in case anyone's following this, this is basically an example based on an $8 million override as an example. We've not set that number yet. That's one of the things we're working on in the next couple of weeks. But it was important to give kind of an illustrative, you know, example, just to know what we're talking about. So that, that's not based on any plan we've determined yet. We haven't done that yet, but it was a good, you know, ballpark example to help people understand.
And I just want to, so Heather is on, but I don't think she can speak. She just stated that she wanted to mention that the items that have been approved are, but are not shown on the tax bill are debt exclusions, such as the library and the Blanchard roof. So just want people to keep that in mind. I'll just also echo that there are things coming off of our debt schedule as well, and the finance team is getting prepared to show those graphs and those, that information. We will not be showing that this evening.
Okay. Thanks, and to Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted to stress to get involved early and often. If, if you have a question, chances are, at least one other person in the community has that. If you can get them to School Committee before their meetings, to Finance before our meetings, we can make sure that those questions are asked and answered. And if we can get them ahead of time, and we can get those to the boards, committees, and departments, it's more likely they can get those answers to us during the hearing as opposed to later on at a subsequent meeting, so.
Thanks, Tom.
Kristin, is the list of, going to your comment, is a list of the budget meetings and what department's going to be heard at which meeting up on the budget website that you've just?
Yes, so I don't know if it's filled in of who's going on what date, but the agendas are being posted, but all of the meetings are on the budget website on the right-hand column, so we will get that information up.
Right, I mean, I think if you can also put what departments are being heard, then people can get their questions in early.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
And as a follow-up, I thought it was very helpful, I'm sure tedious, but in the list of documents, like if you click to go to FY '25 budget documents, the sort of that file tree that we're used to, but somebody took the time to do like a description. And I find that really helpful, because I always click like budget message, or budget detail, or budget presentation. I'm like, no, that's not the one I want. I'll use the other one. So I appreciate that someone took the time to.
I'll pass that on to the staff. Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Well, I did, if we're through with board comments, I want to give anyone here from the public who would like to make a comment a chance to do that. Yep, if you'd like to come up to the microphone.
Should I sit down?
Please, you're invited to sit down, and if you could please state your name and your address.
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening. For the record, my name is Nate McKinnon. My address is 8 Sherlock Lane in Westford. Very excited to be here and with you this evening. And I'm here tonight on behalf of a group of about 30 concerned citizens who are, have been following closely what has happened thus far with our budget, who have recognized that we are in quite the predicament as a community, and who, first of all, want to thank you, the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee, for the work that you've done thus far to ensure that you recognize that you've found all the efficiencies that can be found in this budget, and also recognize that the costs have dramatically escalated for our community as they have for so many other municipalities across the Commonwealth. I have a few other members this evening who are here from our group of 30-plus concerned citizens, who we are prepared and following what's happening here tonight and will be happening up to the closing of the town warrant. And should this, these boards come to the point where the Select Board decides that there will be a request for a Proposition 2.5 override, myself, along with the group of concerned citizens, are prepared to support that and back that and be able to provide resources to other interested members of the community and be able to put forward factual information about why this is necessary and ensure that the services that we rely upon in the Westford community are maintained moving forward. On a personal note, I'm a newer member of the Westford community, and I moved to town for one simple reason. Everything I read about Westford and everything I know about it from growing up in a town next door is that this is a place that values its citizens, it values its school-aged children, it values its seniors, and it's a place that has invested in all of that through the services it provides. And so to see the possibility of the devastating cuts that would occur, should we not get the revenues necessary to meet what's in front of us, causes me great pain and heartache, and I know it does for the other people that I'm here speaking on behalf of tonight who are in the room and also on the Zoom. And so I want to just introduce myself and the group. We're working on preparing a name, a website, a Facebook group, et cetera, and if necessary, we will form and be able to make sure that we're working to help advocate with the Westford, with the members of our town about the importance of this Proposition 2.5 override, should it come to that in the budget brought forth. And I would just say that in the meantime, for you, if you come across any constituents or residents, or for any members of the media here, if there's other individuals who are interested in getting involved in this work, right now, we just have a Gmail address. It's investwestford@gmail.com. I'll say it again, investwestford@gmail.com. We'd very much welcome, folks. We've already started having regular meetings. We'd invite other, anyone else interested in helping ensure that we can maintain and save the services that Westford has so incredibly provided for its citizens moving forward. With that, I will stop. I don't know if there's questions, but I did just want to come and introduce myself, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments from the public?
I have one online.
Oh, please.
So I have Megan O'Connell online. I'm going to push allow to talk, and then I have one written comment that I will read. So Megan, you should be able to talk.
Welcome, welcome, Megan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Connell for South Concord Road. I just want to briefly, I know a lot of people have put in a lot of work on the various boards, put together, you know, various budget proposals, both with and without an override. And I don't want to talk specifically about whether I'm for or against an override, but I just want to touch upon, you know, I think, you know, people have talked about, you know, the inflationary pressures that everyone's been under, which is obviously true. But I think we need to keep in mind, earlier in this meeting, one of the presentations talked about some of the tax relief that might be available to either, you know, older homeowners or low-income homeowners. But I think we also need to keep in mind that there are a significant amount of families, you know, that don't qualify for those tax breaks or tax relief. And, you know, despite the need for a Prop 2.5 override, you know, there's a risk that will force a number of families out of this community. And I don't think, you know, Westford wants to do that, so I would strongly urge the board, if we, if the board does in fact want to recommend a Prop 2.5 override, I would strongly suggest that the board also strongly consider the residential exemption that's available under state law to all homeowners. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Megan.
Great. So the question that came through in text, can we get a bit more understanding regarding health insurance? It's one of the largest increases. But if I understand correctly, it appears that the recommendation of a 22% increase in premiums was not accepted, and only 15% was accepted and implemented. What is the thinking behind passing along only 2/3 of that recommended amount? So to this person, you can certainly review the Health Insurance Trust minutes on our website, but in short, we anticipate seeing that our experience in health insurance is going to decrease, that the amount of cases that we're seeing will hopefully go down. This does factor in our stop-loss insurance and other factors, and if you want to give the Town Manager's Office a call, we can certainly get more information. I know this board has asked for more information as well. We invited you to attend the Health Insurance Trust meeting, and we can certainly have Hub, our broker, into a future meeting if you wish.
And just the specifics of the question, the 22% was the percent of the increase or the, or the contribution?
22% was recommended by our broker as an increase. The Health Insurance Trust took in all factors and our experience over the course of the past year and recommended a 15% increase. They did not feel it was prudent to put a 22% increase on our premium takers.
Okay, so this is the portion that staff who are participating in the program pay?
Yes, and the town pays as well.
And the town pays. Okay, thanks. Okay. Any other questions, either from the public, before we kick off on this? We'll see, a bunch of us will see each other again on Thursday, so we don't need to break for long. Okay. Good. We are not voting on anything tonight. We just wanted to make sure we're syncing up and sharing information. So thank you so much, the School Committee and Finance Committee, for being here tonight and joining. And I don't know if you want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Catherine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Marisol?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting? Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Shelby? I see her mouthing aye. Shinji? Hari?
Aye.
And is Heather still there? Maybe not.
I think she dropped off.
Okay. Motion passed. Okay. More adjourned.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Okay, next up for us is the update on the fiscal '24 fair share apportionment for town and school department.
So at your last meeting, as an item of correspondence, we received documentation from the state issuing a funding mechanism and a reason and formula for the so-called millionaire's tax for the Town of Westford. We further learned that the Town of Westford will be receiving $477,543 for transportation in fiscal '24, so that will be used through the Chapter 90 programs, and I'm working with Acting DPW Director Kyle Fox on how we will be using those funds. Those also are able to roll over. They do not go back into the general fund, so that's really important to understand. Up until today, I was very unsure about the schools' apportionment, and I was finally able to get in touch with someone at DESI who was able to clarify that the school department or the Town of Westford will not be receiving any funds for the school fair share apportionment. It will be going into a state bucket in which they will be, you know, delving into what those will be used for related to those functions. So I don't have a clear picture for the board today. I was able to get a flyer, a six-page flyer, that I was able to put in your packets this afternoon, but the town will not be getting an allotment similar to the transportation for the school portion. So as that becomes more into fruition, and I have some further conversations with the school superintendent, I hope to be able to update the board more on that.
Yeah, I know the school apportionment money was potentially for all things school, right? So Community College, higher ed, Head Start.
So we could get nothing.
Everything. We could get nothing.
We could get something.
Or we could, we could, we just don't know right now.
Right, I know that. I know we could get something, but we also could end up with...
Another question that I...
On the bright side.
Sorry.
Another question that I had is, okay, well, can we use this money? What's the range of things we can use this money for? My understanding is it needs to fit within the Chapter 90 restrictions, which means we maybe can do more highway projects than we could have before.
Correct.
But we couldn't, for instance, take some of that money and somehow use it to block some other...
So we couldn't pay health insurance out of it, or OPEB, or anything like that. It has to stay within that highway apportionment. But I think we can, you know, have a big chunk taken out of delayed or deferred maintenance that I'm looking forward to working with the departments on.
Or we could take out of capital, right?
Correct.
And then, so, okay, so there is some way it could help augment that.
Correct, yes.
That's a good point. Okay, so more to follow on what our best plan is for that.
Right. And this is going to fluctuate from year to year. So we receive $477,000 this year. If people do really well with salaries and we take in a lot of taxes, it could go up or it could stay the same, or if we have a detrimental year, it could go down. So this is one of those other, you can't really count on it on a year-to-year basis. So we need to keep an eye on that as well.
And this is the 4% Millionaire's Tax revenue that passed in the Commonwealth last year?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Kristen about the fair share allotment? Okay. Next up is to review an act on a petition brought by App Tree Incorporated for fines issued by the Westford Tree Warden for the unauthorized removal of town trees at 15 Nutting Road and 44 Flag Road. And I think we're going to get a little bit of background on what happened.
Yes, so I'd just like to welcome Acting DPW Director and Tree Warden Kyle Fox to the table. He has a prepared presentation of what occurred related to two public shade trees within the town of Westford in two distinct locations, and then we do have the appellant from App Tree who is looking to appeal this decision, and I believe you're in the room here. So when Kyle's finished, you're more than welcome to come up to the table. So if you allow Kyle to give his presentation, we have a short slideshow as well.
And thank you to the crew that's out there tonight trying to keep the road safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Select Board. As Town Manager last indicated, I'm here to talk about two incidents that happened over the past year regarding public shade trees. I thought I would start with a little background of what public shade trees are and what the program is. If you go to the next slide, please. So a public shade tree, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, are all trees within the public way or the boundaries thereof. I underlined a couple seconds in this Section 1 of Chapter 87 that are kind of important. When it appears in any proceeding which the ownership or rights of a tree are material to the issue, there's some extra language, and then it's a... If in doubt, you should err on the side of calling the tree a public shade tree. So for example, if you're not right next to a property bound, or it's an, you can't really determine by plan exactly where the property line is, but you think it's close, the Mass. General Law states you should consider it a public shade tree. So just as a background, next slide, please. Chapter 87 in Section 2 is the powers of the tree warden, and that states that the tree warden shall have care and control over all public shade trees in the town and shall enforce all the provisions of the law for the preservation of such trees. And this is really the core reason why I'm here tonight. Next slide, please. So cutting of public shade trees is covered in Section 3. Again, excerpt from that section. Public shade trees may be cut, trimmed, or removed in whole or in part by any person other than the tree warden, except upon a permit in writing from said tree warden, nor shall they be cut down or removed by the tree warden or his deputy or other person without a public hearing. Next slide. Then we get on to the penalties for violating Section 3. In Section 6, the violations of any provision of the three preceding sections shall be punished by the forfeiture of not more than $500 to the use of the city or town. In Section 12, it states whoever wantonly injures, defaces, or destroys a shrubber plant or tree shall be liable to the town or any person for all damages to its or his interest in said shrub, tree, plant, tree, or fixture. Basically, what that's saying is the actual value of the tree, similar if a vehicle hit a fire hydrant or some other public structure got damaged, the town would recoup the actual value of that asset. In MGL, Chapter 242, it goes on to state that a person who without license willfully cuts down, carries away girdles, or otherwise destroys trees shall be liable to the owner in tort for three times the amount of the damages assessed. So those are the violation options available to the town. So now we'll get into the specifics of the two incidents that we've had this year. The first one occurred on 15 Nutting Road, and my slides are a little out of order. Apologize for that. So I was notified that morning, the morning of October 19th, that there was substantial tree cutting going on at the property at 15 Nutting, and possibly public shade trees were involved. So I went out to investigate, and what I found was significant work going on. Prior to going out, I had done some quick research through the engineering plan sets and our GIS system to see what I could find for approximate location of right-of-ways. Many people assume that right-of-ways are standard, you know, it's five feet off the edge of pavement, or it's 10 feet off the edge of pavement. I think if you ask 100 people where the right-of-way is, you'd get probably 99 different answers. But the simple fact is, the right-of-way is variable on any and all of our roads. One of the common things that'll happen is when a developer builds a road, even if everything goes perfect, the pavement, the road itself, may not be in the center of the right-of-way. So just that little piece right there is going to give you some variability where the right-of-way... So when this gets back to that point I made earlier about public shade trees being, what constitutes a public shade tree? And if you can't for certain tell, and if you're in doubt, Mass. General Law states you shall call it a public shade tree until evidence can show otherwise. In this case, you can see, if you go to the next slide, Kristen. So this is a picture from our GIS. We did not have any engineering plans along Nutting Road that showed a good picture of the right-of-way, so we had to defer to our GIS system. So in the picture in front of you, there's a red dashed line at the corner, at the southwest corner of 15 Nutting Road. That line is approximately 16 feet. So that means at that location, which is very close to where the tree that was cut is, the right-of-way was about 16 feet, according to GIS. Next slide, please.
Do you want the photos or the text?
The photos are fine, thank you. So before we go in any further into the specifics, here's some pictures of the tree prior to the cutting on the 19th. So it's the, on the top, on the left-hand picture, it's the tree kind of in the middle. It's the co-dominant northern red oak tree, yep, right there. Looks fairly healthy, and the picture on the right is an aerial view of the same tree, which was taken October 1st, 2023, so just a couple weeks before it was cut down. And you can see it's, you know, based on the leaves, it appears to be a very healthy tree. If you go to the next slide, please. So here's what it looked like when I got to 15 Nutting Road that morning. As I mentioned, a whole bunch of trees were cut down. This tree in particular is the one that jumped out as being likely a public shade tree. The picture to the right is a tape measure showing about 5 and 1/2 feet to the tree. And again, remembering back to the picture of the GIS, the right-of-way is approximately 16 feet. So evidence shows that it's most probably a public shade tree that was cut. Next slide, please. Here's another picture of the stump that was left. It's about four feet tall. It still sits in this condition, I believe. And then a picture of me measuring the diameters of the tree, and the boards of that will come in into play in a few slides. So after determining that it was a public shade tree, I asked the crew on site to cease work, and they did. They were very respectful, very, very good crew. At that point, the foreman called Mr. App, who came out to meet me, and within about 15 minutes, really great response, and we had a conversation about, you know, that it was possibly a public shade tree, that it was likely a public shade tree, and the repercussions of that and what would be needed to go forward. In this case, there was a lot of tree debris on the property, so I did give them authorization to finish doing the trees that clearly were not public shade trees, which were all the ones along Bobalink Road and all the ones in the backyard. And I asked them to clean up the existing debris in the front yard, so I could see if there were any more stumps from trees that were cut that I just couldn't see. The good news is there weren't any others that I would consider public shade trees. So this was the only one on the property. So all that said, I then moved into valuation mode to try and put a value on the tree to what the value of the tree was to the town. So just some stats on it. So it was a northern red oak tree. As I mentioned, a co-dominant tree, that just means it has two stems that come out of the trunk. One of them was 21 inches in diameter, the other 27 inches in diameter at breast height. DBH is a common forestry term for how to measure trees, and basically, you're measuring trees at 4 and 1/2 feet off the ground to maintain consistency. The approximate age of the tree was about 90 years, and I got that by actually counting the rings of the tree. It was in apparent good health. By coincidence, in 2021, those of you who were Select Board members at the time probably heard National Grid come to you for permission to do some tree work on Nutting Road. And they, so they had a hazard tree mitigation program go through this very road. And in fact, the tree to the right of the driveway was pruned because it was determined to be a hazard tree by National Grid. The northern red oak we're talking about did not make the list, meaning they determined it not to be a hazard tree. Next slide. So this will get a little technical and hopefully not too boring, but so now getting down to how to evaluate the, put a cost value to the tree. So the guide that tree professionals use is this Council of Tree and Landscape Appraisers' Guide, and they have a few methodologies to evaluate the trees. I used two of those methodologies. The first was a trunk formula technique, and the second was a cost compounding technique. The trunk formula technique, basically, it takes the cost of the largest tree of the same variety that you can currently buy from a nursery and comparing that cost per square inch of that little tree to the size of the big tree. So basically, think of taking all those little trees that you could buy, how many of those can you fit in the same tree trunk? And it's basically just an extrapolation from there. The cost compounding technique is more of a time-based, present value, future cost kind of mathematical formula. So next slide. So using the trunk formula technique at the top of this slide, the area of the nursery tree was 15.9 inches squared, and the area of the co-dominant trees that were cut down was about 918 inches squared. Cost of the nursery tree was just shy of $1,000, which yielded a unit cost per square inch of about $60 and change for the little tree. Extrapolating that over the size of the tree at 15 Nutting yielded a cost, or a value, I should say, of about $56,000. Then I took the look at the cost compounding technique and utilized that one. So the way that one works is the two components you put in, or three components, you have the interest rate over that time period of the tree. So using Google, I got the average interest rate from 90 years ago to today, which worked out to about 3.58%. The cost of the tree, which with labor would be about $1,500, and the time would be the 90-year life of the tree, and that yielded a value of just over $35,000. Knowing that there is variability in that, I chose to use the lesser of the two values just to, you know, exercise some conservativeness in the evaluation. So then from there, there's the next section in the manual on how to do this talks about depreciation, because not every tree is a specimen tree. So in this case, the tree was constrained by being adjacent to power lines. So as the tree kept growing, it was limited on just how big it could get and how perfect it could get, because there is some trimming due to power lines. So what's suggested in there is a 30% depreciation of the value of the tree, which I took off in there and arrived at the assessed penalty value of $24,889. Moving on to the Flag Road tree, this one was cut down by App Tree Company on March 6th of this year, of 2023. And this one, we found out about it because a neighbor adjacent to one of the properties where trees are being removed had called us with a complaint that tree debris was being dumped on his property without his permission. So we went out to look at it and tried to resolve that issue. While we were out there, we noticed that another public shade tree was most likely cut down, so we went into the research mode. During that site visit, Director Cronin talked to the foreman and left a voicemail for Mr. App that unfortunately went unreturned, and due to, I guess, busyness and other things going on, it wasn't followed up at that time. In this case, again, a picture from GIS shows about a 32-foot right-of-way, and you see the road is on a curve, it's kind of a funky area, and that red dashed line represents the distance from the edge of pavement to the right-of-way line. Again, it's about 32 feet. That little red dot is approximately where the tree was located, about 16 feet off the edge of pavement. If we could go to the next slide, Kristen. So again, here's pictures from before. In this case, it was a white ash tree, and you'll see from the picture on the right, on the left, it looks fairly healthy, but that was an older picture that I got from Google. The most recent picture that I could get prior to it being cut was from July 27, 2022, and you can see the tree in the middle, right next to the driveway, and it looks fairly dead. And that's not surprising, because it's an ash tree which is susceptible to the eastern, to the ash borer. And that'll come into play in the evaluation of the tree. So, next picture, please, next slide. The picture on the left is how Director Cronin and I found the site when we arrived on March 6th. In the middle of the picture, behind the chainsaw, is the stump of the ash tree. And the picture on the right, again, is a tape measure view, measuring about 16 feet to the edge of pavement. Next slide. In this case, I couldn't use the first method for evaluation because the stump was cut too low, so I couldn't get the DBH, the diameter of breast height of the tree. And since that yielded a higher valuation anyway, I decided just to go right to the cost compounding technique method. So in this case, again, counting rings, I determined the tree was about 60 years old. The interest rate from 60 years ago yielded about 3.92%. Doing the math, yielded a value of 15,000, just over $15,000 for the tree. As I mentioned, it was a tree obviously susceptible to pests. The manual references that, and there's a depreciation value for trees susceptible to lethal pests of up to 90%. So I did take 90% off the value of this tree, yielding an assessed penalty... So I did take ninety percent off the value of this tree, yielding an assessed penalty of fifteen hundred and six dollars. And that's the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions or yield the floor to Mr. App.
Any questions from the board? John?
Uh, we used to determine their, the right of way and you say sixteen feet in one case and I forget what the other one was. Well, sixteen feet in one, what was this one?
Thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two feet. Is that from the center of the road or is, was that the total right of way?
So, no, that was to, the, the measurements I spoke of were the, uh, distance from the edge of pavement to the right of way line.
So John, if you turn around.
Yeah, I, yeah. I can see it on here.
Okay.
It seems like a pretty, pretty lengthy right of way.
It is, and, and, you know, particularly on older roads, right of ways are often very variable. Uh, in this case, you can see from the, the GIS picture, the road is built fairly to the west in the right of way, uh, to the left side. One of the really good indicators for us as to where a right of way might be is stone walls. And certainly in the forty-four Flag Road, uh, site, you can see the stone wall behind the tree in, in the background of the picture. So that, that's really what triggered us to say this might be a, a public shade tree and, and caused us to evaluate it further.
Other questions? Scott?
So, the, the ladder tree, the, the, the ash, it was dying apparently anyway, right?
Correct.
At some point, you know, I, I guess a healthy tree that would grow and blossom, you know, there's one story. A tree that's, that's dying would probably be cut down at some point anyway, right? So I, I guess that the logical question is that tree was not really viable anyway, correct?
Absolutely correct, and, and I would add, um, that had the homeowner contacted us, we would have likely, um, hired our, our brist to take the tree down because we know that it was not going to live more than a year. What, once, once the pest gets into it, they die very quickly.
And then the second question, which, because I'm up on the board for like ten years, right? I've never had a tree here before, so, and I know you're new to town, but
Yeah.
is this a common, um, occurrence that, that we, or is this, or is this a really unique one?
So that, that's a great question. Uh, one of the, um, so one of the things that occurred in the last year, um, that hadn't happened in the past was, uh, Steve sent me and another employee to actually become certified tree wardens. So now we have. Yep. I'm, I'm actually a certified tree warden.
Okay.
And, um, and in that class, we, we learned about, you know, doing the job and, and how to properly do the job. There are a number of towns who do exactly what I'm sharing with you tonight. Um, there's other towns that choose not to, uh, enforce the state laws. And really that's a town by town decision. Um, the law is on the books, it's, it's an early nineteen hundreds law, it's been around a long time. Every town in Massachusetts is required by law to have a tree warden. So how, how the select board decides to proceed, um, I'm, you know, fairly interested to learn myself. Because there, I think there's a variety of options, uh, that, that you all could, could choose.
I guess that's the, the third, the third question, as you mentioned, at least in the case of the first tree, there's, there's a, a penalty of the value of the tree.
Yeah.
There's also a penalty of triple damages.
Right.
And I guess the question I have, for, for my question on the board is, are those the only two options? Or, or are there, with, with dog hearing, we got a whole variety of things we can do.
Yes, so there's, there's really two options and the second option has a part B. So Section Six calls for that fine of up to five hundred dollars for the act. And then Section Twelve is where it talks about the value of the tree. And then it's that other MGL, I think two forty-two it was, that talks about triple damages. Again, trying to be fair to, to the contractor, I, what I presented to you was only the single, um, damage value. Because I thought, you know, that was pretty harsh already, frankly.
Well, I mean, we can ask Mr. App, I guess if the homeowner asks that tree be taken down too, right? It was not like.
Yeah, the, the homeowner, um, is the one who requested the work, is my understanding, yeah.
Other, other questions? John?
You won't comment your questions?
Well, I guess, I have a, I have a question, any other questions? So my, I guess my, my question is, it sounds a little bit like if someone had, is it most typical that the tree contractors are aware of these rules and know that if they're within a certain, like they, they would know if they're in the right of way, they should come and do a check.
Yes, yeah, we, we get a fair number of calls about, uh, coming out to, to make a, a determination on whether it's a shade tree or not.
Okay, and, and on the second one, if they'd called you, I mean, the stone wall was there, it was pretty far back, it was dying anyway. If they called and asked, you probably would have said, yeah, go ahead and take it down, or you would have taken it down.
Correct.
And the first one, looks like it's a lot more clearly in the, in the right of way, it was a perfectly healthy tree.
Yeah.
If they called you and asked you and did the proper procedure, you would have said, no, leave that, leave that tree, that's a good tree.
Yeah, there's dozens of, of trees similar that I've looked at over the past year and, and told homeowners that, no, we're not taking that tree down, it's perfectly healthy. There, there's no reason to take that tree.
Okay, that helps, I just want to make sure we're not doing.
If they wanted to take the tree down, it would be a public hearing process.
Yeah, it would go through a public shade tree hearing.
We haven't had this kind of hearing, we've had, we've had shade, public shade tree hearings in the past where we've determined whether the tree can come down or not.
Yeah, and in, in calendar year twenty twenty-three, we did have two public shade tree hearings. One of them came before you, uh, the grid request, uh, the other one was for a, a homeowner, uh, where the tree was damaging their fence, and, uh, that one was approved.
Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure there's not some kind of selective enforcement here and it sounds like it's routine for people to call you, you're routinely doing these assessments, okay?
Yeah.
So we do want to have kind of a comment deliberation, but first I'd like to hear from the, um,
The contractor.
The contractor, and I'm trying, I, I, Mr. App, please, why don't you come up, Mr. App, if you would? The appellate, is that what, the person appealing this, uh, this finding? Mr. App?
Good evening, uh, thanks for taking the time to meet with me. Uh, we do a lot of tree work on Westford and Chelmsford.
Could you identify yourself and?
Yes, sir. My name's Ed Wood App, um, sixty-two years old, I'm a former US Marine. I've been in the tree business since nineteen eighty-three. I'm a former, uh, uh, the tree contractor for the whole town of Woburn for almost ten years. I know the rules, the regu-, regulations. Routinely, if there's any doubt, we call the tree warden. This tree was unclear, the big one on fifteen Nutting Road. The other one was dead as a doornail along with all the other ones we cut. But the important one here to me is number fifteen Nutting Road. The base of it, it, for the exception in the V in here, was all, was rotted and I showed Kyle that. He really didn't disagree with me, but when water sets in a V crotch, whether it's two or three or four pieces, over a period of time it rots, the tree can still be green and pretty and look healthy, but structurally it's dangerous. There's tree accidents all the time, trees falling down, killing people. The, the tree, this particular tree we cut down, this big tree, we had a seventy-five foot bucket truck up there. There were huge holes in the tree, there were dead limbs in it. The lady we worked for and the husband complained about routinely dead limbs falling down near the car. I know when I was there, kids were riding bicycles, little girls and guys riding bikes up and down the street. And I had to tell them, hey, you, you guys got to go over there. This tree was loaded with, with dead limbs, it was a safety issue. Uh, we are highly respectful, nobody wants to get in trouble with, with city hall and, and just go ahead and do whatever they want. The rules are the rules, and when there's a, when there's a gray area, you call. This tree didn't look like there was a gray area. I did say to the homeowner, are you sure you own this tree? Because some neighbors from across the way, their property can come right up to the driveway. He said, no, no, that's my tree, and, and we cut it. So the, the, the area or what you call, um, was not clear. It, it was not clear. I think Kyle said that, that in some instances they go back thirty-two feet or sixteen feet. It was not clear on that. I think this is an issue that we made an honest mistake. And, uh, you know, I'm, I don't have twenty-seven thousand dollars to pay for a, a tree that was loaded with holes and dead limbs in it. But I am willing to pay, there's a, there's a state fine, as Kyle said, of five hundred dollars. Over and beyond that, he's citing to you a lot of, uh, technical jargon on a tree that's perfect with no dead limbs and whatnot. Uh, this was not the case on this tree, th- this is a dangerous tree. I'm right next to the state police barracks over and, and over, and three years ago, we had a, a pine tree come right down on, on a woman's car and killed her. Three months before that, there was on the news, a five-year-old boy got hit with a dead limb. You get kids running around, the guy's wife's bringing groceries home, he wanted the tree cut so nobody would get hurt. And, and I'm in the business of, of really protecting people from getting hit with dead limbs and, and trees. Uh, the tree had issues on it structurally with dead limbs. I brought some pictures, the pine tree that Kyle mentioned right next to it, it's got a hole in it right, right like that, right now. And I had said to him, Kyle, why is this tree still standing up with a hole in it? Why didn't you guys take it down? That's probably the tree he referred to National Grid trimmed it, that's not going to do anything structurally. And there's a pine tree that looks healthy, it's vibrant, but it, it's like driving over a bridge where the legs are all been drilled holes in it. It's not safe, it's not safe, there's a hole in it, that tree should be removed. And, and I'm willing to come in at my cost, at no cost to the town, and remove that tree, it's about a hundred and twenty feet tall. Or I can plant the tree where this other one was cut down, but we're just working guys, you know, I, uh, I'm right in there with my crew and we certainly don't have twenty-seven thousand dollars to, to, to do that. This was an honest mistake because the area was not clearly, where I normally say, hey, within five feet, yep, that's a town tree, we got to call. And we're respectful of that. And you want good relations with all the towns because that's how we make a living.
So just, just so I'm clear, so the, you're, uh, you have a lot of concerns about the health of the tree. If the tree was very clearly in the public right of way, it was very clearly a public tree, you would have called Kyle and come out and made the argument, look, this looks damaged, and you guys would have reached an agreement of some kind?
Yeah, I mean, he was very nice, professional, we, we had a good conversation. And I said, Kyle, it wasn't clear, you know, and I, I would have called you because I do it all the time. And the custom was adamant, I want that tree cut down, uh, it's dropping dead limbs all over, my wife's bringing groceries in. And I, and while he's talking to me, I'm seeing kids running bicycles up and down. So, uh, I got a picture right here, like I said, the pine tree right next to it, I brought several copies. And you can see the hole right there, you could put a, a softball in it. And the tree's green and pretty, and just because the tree, uh, the trees have green pine needles, the green leaves on them, doesn't mean that they're, they're safe. Structurally, they have issues. All it takes is a, a limb to come down and hit a kid and they're going to get hurt.
Okay, thanks, I think I understand. Questions from the board?
Just some comments.
I have a couple of questions. So one question I have for you, sir, is when you got the voicemail from, or I should ask, did you actually receive the voicemail from the town during the March incident?
I don't remember that because I have guys, I, I get, I cut, I do the cutting too, up in the bucket truck. And I give the guys all the time my telephone. I go, hey, just take the message or return the phone call. So, you know, it's quite, quite likely that during that period of time, one of my tree workers, um, didn't give me the message or write it down. So we apologize for that. That, that job over there, Flag Road, had about ten dead trees, they weren't even big, they were about twelve or fifteen inches in diameter. And as Kyle said, there's an ash, ash borers insects, been going on about ten years. They were dead as a doornail, you know, they make baseball bats out of ash trees, those are clearly dead. And it was inside the stone wall. So obviously, in that case, the homeowner figured, hey, I've been mowing my lawn for years, these trees are inside the stone wall. They're my trees. And, and there was nothing outside the wall or on top of the wall.
It's actually outside, it's on the roadside.
That's a fact of it.
Well, you, you mean, both of them are on the, the side of the wall closest to the road, closer to the road, not?
Well, there's two separate jobs, right?
Right.
The, the big, the big tree is fifteen Nutting Road. And then Flag Road, we cut it, it wasn't even a big tree, it was an ash tree, probably only fifteen, twenty feet high, and it was dead. It was all, all punky. And, uh, and very likely, one of the guys from Public Works called and, and one of my guys took the call or it went to voicemail and, you know, we're, we're busy running back and forth to different jobs. Uh, but the big tree had safety issues in it, dead limbs, but even with that, if I knew it was a town tree, I would have called. And, uh, like I said, this tree here is, this is an accident waiting to happen, it's got a hole in it, it's about five feet off the ground.
Yeah, I, I just, just one more question, I'm sorry. I guess, my, my concern is that for somebody like you who has been in practice for so long, to state that I've, that you only deem trees are in the public way within, if they're within five feet of a road, seems a little disingenuous, right?
That's the standard usually, five feet, eight feet.
Really? I mean, I mean, I'm not a tree guy, uh, but you know, I've worked with the town for a while and I'm aware of where the right of way may or may not lie, and I know how different it can deviate from the actual roadbed. And I'm certain somebody with your experience should know the same. So it seems like that's a, I don't know, a pretty laissez-faire way of establishing where you think the right of way is versus just making a call and doing your due diligence, you know?
I, I understand how you're thinking about it, but I make calls all the time. Nobody wants to be sitting here explaining why they, they cut a, a tree by accident.
So then why didn't you make the call on this?
Because it didn't look to me like it was a town tree. And when Kyle come out, he says, the, I forget the, the jargon he used, that we own all the way up was running along the guy's driveway. Who wouldn't think they own trees right along your driveway when you buy the house? And few people survey when they buy houses, they, they just assume, most neighbors are nice, pretty good, and they don't get in those pickle arguments. So it didn't, it didn't stick out like a, a, a red, a sore thumb.
Okay.
Okay. Other, other questions before we move to deliberation?
No, fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. App. Uh, I'm sorry, question from the public?
Uh, yes, I'm the owner of fifteen Nutting Road.
Okay. Uh, sure, why don't you come up to my?
Do you need to come up?
Okay.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mala, I'm the owner of fifteen Nutting, uh, Nutting Road. And, um, and we did ask him to take the tree down. And, uh, from what I heard from Kyle, it did look, you know, green and healthy from, from the top. But, you know, we were, uh, running into a lot of issues with the tree. And we've been living in Westford since, uh, September of twenty seventeen. And the house we chose has a lot of trees, so we do love trees, that's the reason why we chose the house. But some of the trees, you know, has, and have been problematic over the years. In year of two thousand seventeen, that was a few months after we had moved in, uh, we had two incidents in the same year. The first one, um, the dead tree limb kind of took the entire, um, power from the side of the house. And we were without power in the middle of a snowstorm for four days. And I had just given birth to my little child, who is six now. So, you know, had we not had our master electrician as a neighbor next door, we would have, we don't know what we would have done in those four days. Uh, so that was one incident. And the same year, another tree limb dropped on the, um, side of the car and, you know, we had a major repair done on one of our cars. And if I, if you'd like, I can show the pictures of those car damages as well. And as he had mentioned, uh, I have three kids, uh, and they use driveway up and down, you know, during, you know, the nicer weather. So we were always concerned about their safety. And that was the reason we asked him like, okay, this tree needs to go. And, um, to us, you know, it looked like it was within our property line. So when he asked, we just said, yes, it looks like, you know, it's ours. So that was a true honest mistake on both of our part. And when I saw the, um, letter, I was kind of floored by the amount and, in my head, I was like, this punishment doesn't fit the crime, you know, the, uh, the punishment should have been like, okay, plant hundred trees all over the town or something to that effect. Because we didn't even pay him that much amount to cut all the trees. And, and you, you all know, like, it's not very cheap to cut the trees down. It's not like we had all this money lying around, like, you know what, let's cut down all the trees and spend all our money, you know? So that was a decision that we needed to make for the safety of our children.
Yeah, okay, we, I think we appreciate.
And we were glad we did it because a few weeks ago, we had a, you know, a very bad weather. And we were just thankful, like, oh goodness, like, we did it right on time. Otherwise, we would have definitely had another power outage for the entire town because of our trees.
I, I appreciate your position and thank you for, for sharing that. I don't know if there's any, any questions for the homeowner? Okay, thank, thank you so much, Mr. App, if you, you can, uh?
Yeah, do you want me to leave you these photos or?
Uh, sure, why don't you leave them there and, and thank you. Why don't you leave them there, and thank you so much for being here. And Bob, we have one question online.
Structurally, there was, there was issues with the tree.
Yes, we got it.
Uh, black in a tree means rot from the inside out.
Yeah.
When you get up over 25 feet, you can see where the leaders are, the two big, big limbs that were, it was black.
Okay. I, I think we, I think we understand and appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Bob Jeffries.
Welcome, Bob.
I remember where Bob was.
Yeah, this, can you hear me?
Yep. Hi, Bob.
Okay. Mostly, this is a little bit of history for Scott. The, uh, this battle on public shade trees goes back to Dick Emmett. It's about over 40 years ago. And when I got on the board, Dick Emmett asked me to take up the indomitable of trying to protect public shade trees. Most of the hearings have to do with National Grid, who I think recently wanted to cut down somewhere near 70 trees on Brenneville Road and on Forge Village Road. It's rare that a homeowner cuts down a public tree. Most homeowners know where their lot lines are. Most of the right-aways are 50 feet wide. The road is only 20 to 22 feet wide. You can assume that over half of what you're looking at is not in the roadway itself. So, to say that you didn't realize the tree that close to the edge of the paving was a public tree, and the key thing in this, uh, this odd law from, I think, 1893, is that the presumption is the tree is a public tree unless you prove it's not. It's not a question of, oh, I decided that I'm going to cut this tree down, or that the homeowner said I'm going to cut the tree down. It's based on the presumption is it's a public tree, if it's, and it's a public shade tree. And this ties right into climate change and heat islands. It's got a lot of implications that go beyond just, it's a tree. And the thing that gets me a lot about is, we had an exchange student from France years and years ago who came here and said, and this is the first time I've really thought about this, she said, oh, I've never lived in a forest town before. Westford is a forest town. The trees are important to us. All of these trees, you can't assume that the tree can be cut down because it's not a public tree. And you can't assume that the tree is doomed. Uh, on my own property, I have a number of co-dominant oak trees that are much older than the one that was cut down. It is not a death sentence for a, a red oak to have two trunks rather than one. But mostly, I wanted to compliment the tree warden because he did an excellent job of presenting his case. He did an excellent job of explaining how this law is supposed to work. And although I sympathize with the immensity of the cost, it is a piece of public property taken down without permission and is now lost to us. So, I, I think you have to get it across to people that you cannot do this unless the town can look at it and determine that it, in fact, is a tree that needs to come down or that it is not a public shade tree. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Marion Harmon.
Uh, Marion. Welcome, Marion.
That's good. And all the points.
Marion, we're, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you, Marion.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep, much better. Much better.
Yeah. Um, well, uh, Bob, Bob Jeffries said somewhat of what I was going to say. I, I am very impressed with the tree warden, um, delighted that the town is, is taking it seriously, that, that trees would, you know, that are in the public way are very, very important to the town. And, um, so I just want to, um, give a, a rousing cheer to the, to the tree wardens and, and hope that this continues, that, um, that, uh, that, that trees are, are, are uh, very, uh, very much appreciated here in town, and, um, we, we certainly need them for carbon sequestration purposes. A 90-year-old tree is, is barely getting started, you know? Oaks live to three, three to 500 years. Um, so, and the other thing I just wanted to say is that a hole, a hole in a pine tree does not mean that pine tree is a dangerous tree. Most older trees are somewhat, um, have, have holes in, in them, and there's no problem to that. So, um, they can go on and on. I mean, pine trees live at least 300 years.
Okay.
So, yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Marion.
Be what.
Anything else? Because I'd like to move on to...
Um, there's just one comment. Sue Thomas is on with, with commentary here. I know, Sue, you're on the line. I'd rather you speak your comments rather than I read them.
Sue, could you, could you make your point briefly? We're going to move on to deliberation here. We can't, are you out there, Sue?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So, I had two points. One is that a public tree is a town asset like any other, and generally, it's one that appreciates rather than depreciates. So, the discussion of damaging or, or taking a public asset is no different whether it's a living asset or a, a fixed asset or commodity. So, I ask you to treat this discussion in the same way that you would if any other asset were removed from the town without permission. Secondly, just by circumstance, uh, Mr. App's rep Kevin approached me in my yard Friday afternoon before the storm, uh, suggesting that I had many dangerous trees on my property, and I would get a great deal because he was already in the neighborhood cutting my neighbor's trees and had a crane available. Um, so I did take the opportunity to learn about his services and tour Kevin around my yard, where he was unable to identify a diseased tree that is in my yard and the disease that it has, uh, or the species of that tree. But he was quite happy to discuss removing a several hundred-foot-tall pine tree on the conservation land that adjoins my property, even after I suggested and told it, in fact, that I believed it was not my tree, it was Conservation's tree, and that neither one of us had the right to take it down. Um, so, I do think that this particular vendor would benefits from some retraining about what the rules are and how to approach customers in a sort of non-fear-mongering, storm-chasing way. Um, because I did feel that this particular salesperson was quite aggressive with me and actually felt alarmed enough to send out a warning to my neighbors.
Okay.
Um, about the approach.
Sue, so, so thank you, Sue. I think we understand your point. So, let's move to, uh...
Actually, Tom, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I have one question for Mr. App. Sir, do you, do you carry insurance? And does your insurance cover a situation like this? If you were levy to find of this size, would your insurance company pay for it? Because that's typically, I think, how, going to some of these points about other town property being, you know, impacted by, say, a car crash, the motorist's car insurance would handle the, the, you know, paying it back to the town. So, have it, does you have insurance that would cover something like this?
I have, uh, workers' comp insurance. I'm not sure how that would work.
That's not workers' comp, no.
Okay. And just in case people couldn't hear, the, um, Mr. App said that he had workers' comp insurance and was unclear about insurance related to this. Uh, Scott?
I have a question for, for Kyle. So, you know, in your example, which I think is good, if somebody hit a fire hydrant and took it out, we'd replace the fire hydrant, right? We carry, replace a 90-year-old oak tree. Can you replace it with a younger oak tree? That is, what, the $1,000 variety that you mentioned?
You, you certainly can, yeah. And in the evaluation process, that, that's where it takes it into account, the CCT method, the cost-compounding method, is that even though you can replace the tree one-for-one, you can't replace the value of the tree because, you know, it took 90 years to get a tree that valuable. So, that, that's where the methodology comes into play.
But, I mean, if, if the town wished, it could replace that tree with something inferior but which would...
Grow.
Without a doubt, yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks. So, we're going to move on to, any other questions, information questions? Okay, we're going to move on to deliberation. And just to understand the range of outcomes, the, the authority we have is to enforce the state fine, the fine as Kyle's laid it out. What range of authority do we have? Can we modify it? Can we say acceptable redress is...
Yes, you can.
I think we can do whatever we want.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear before we started.
The state law is very vague in terms of, once the fine is delved, what the board would do in terms of, of that. So, Kyle has laid out very clearly the letter of the law, what the fines would be related to the value of the tree and related to the violations related to state law. The board can determine that they want to go along with that. The board can determine that they don't want to do it anything at all or something in the middle.
Okay. And we can modify, we could add additional actions like planting more trees.
And I recommend that you take each tree separately, so not to confuse the situation.
Okay. Let's take the, uh, the older ash tree first.
It seems to me, I mean, Kyle agrees, that tree was, was dead. If he had gone out and seen it, he would have authorized it to come down.
Hmm.
And so, yes, Mr. App did not follow the proper procedure. Um, and, um, so I think that he should at least bear some responsibility for not following the proper procedure, and maybe we can, I want to actually talk about that in connection with the second one.
Okay.
But I don't think he deserves a hefty fine for the tree on Flag Road.
Okay. So, understood.
Just to be clear for the board, um, the fine for unauthorized removal was given at $500, and then the restitution for tree replacement was $1,506.
Right. So, your, your proposal, it sounds like, is let's keep in mind that, that proper procedure wasn't followed, but if it had been followed, this tree would've been removed anyway.
Right.
Okay. So, we, we're conscious of that, it's important to follow procedure, but we're maybe going to address that with the second case. Is...
Which I, I agree about. I, I do think that I would, by the way, in a sense, to me, the most alarming, I mean, Chris and I are both a person of safety, right? So, we look at sidewalks. And within about a week of being on public safety, you know that the right-of-way is hugely variable, and five feet could easily be in the right-of-way. So, it is alarming to think that anybody would think, oh, five feet, that's, that's a fair game tree. So, I, I do think that I would be inclined to, to send a message, when in doubt, talk to the tree warden. So, I, I think you want to keep that $500 fine in place of both of them, because I, I think the message is, yeah, check before you cut.
Okay. Other, other thoughts?
The other thought also I had, in addition to the $500 fine, which I agree with you, is, um, Mr. App has, uh, offered to replace that oak tree that he took down, and I think that we should take him up on that offer. And if there are, um, if there is some work, Kyle, in, in the town, that needs to be done with trees that you have identified as, as public trees and that are hazardous and that we need to hold a public hearing on, uh, then I, I have one of two proposals. Either we get some free tree work.
Yep.
Um, or if there are areas where trees need to be planted, we get free trees.
I like it.
Yeah, if, if the idea is retraining and not solely punitive, I think some financial measure makes a ton of sense, and then some in-kind contribution, I think, also makes sense, because that actually does good for us.
Yes. Yes.
So, uh, if we're going to frame that up, we would assess the state fine for each of the trees, we would ask each of these trees be replaced, and we would reserve up to some dollar amount of in-kind tree work as follows, as determined by Kyle. That amount might be $5,000.
I'm not sure how to replace the ash trees and so on.
Yeah, I'm not sure I replace, it's the ash tree either.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, or do we have the ability, though, to do the in-kind? I mean, is that...
I want to double-check on that because we are at a procurement type of situation. We don't know if he has insurance. We want to make sure that a vendor that we hire has insurance. So, uh, we could always revisit this at a future meeting, um, if you wish, just continue it.
We could say pending satisfactory assessment.
Or we could, we could take a donation. If we can't, if we can't do in-kind services, perhaps a donation to go to planting trees in the future.
Well, we could do an in-kind donation, right? We just can't...
Or an in-kind donation that we could then use however we want it to use, yeah.
Sure.
Or, I mean, you could, or even in-kind trees. I'm saying, if, if the, if the area has insurance on big trees...
Right.
There's no issue of insurance on planting...
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I'm saying the same thing.
Right, but this plan more than one, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I do want to, I like these ideas, but I do want to caution, you know, how much work that might put on town staff to have to organize and manage, you know, replacement tree plantings. So, Kyle, do you, do you feel like that's something that you can take on and...
I also want to note that when you plant a tree, you also have to water it for a certain amount of time.
Exactly. So, that's, that's why I want to ask Kyle his opinion on, on that aspect.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great question, um, and, uh, a very creative solution. Um, it's certainly possible, and, and really, there's two ranges of options in there. Public shade trees, interestingly, again, in Chapter 87, can either be planted within the public right-of-way, or the law does allow for public shade trees to be planted on private property within 20 feet of the property line. If you were to, um, go forward with something like this, what I may suggest, and again, other towns are doing this, that, uh, given the proximity of the power lines, because, you know, we don't want to...
Right.
... create burden for National Grid and, and for our power service, would be to, um, either plant it further back within the right-of-way, or maybe even get permission from the homeowner to plant the tree on private property. And what I would recommend, if you choose that option, is that we get some sort of agreement where it's a public shade tree for the first three years of its life, where we have a, a...
Guarantee.
The ability to, to make sure it gets watered, it, it thrives. Uh, once it gets to year three, the tree is pretty much going to survive. And typically, homeowners, by the time they've raised a tree for three years, they're, they're kind of fond of the tree and want to keep it. So, so I may recommend that sort of option.
So, I, I think maybe we would specify a replacement tree that fit the recommendations as recommended by you. I don't think we want to have this necessarily come back to us and have a multi-part exercise here. So, what's on the table now, and we can add to it or subtract from it, is assessing the fine in each of the two places, replacement of the, of the healthy tree. Uh, and then we'd consider some, some other range of in-kind donation to go with that. There could either be planting of trees according to the guidance of our tree warden, or it could be tree work. It seems like we have to give some bound to that if, if we like that idea. Um, so I don't know if, if we have a number we want to pick. I think now it's a $1,000 total fine and the tree. I think this is beginning to send a message that you, we want people to take this seriously. I, 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 yep, Chris?
Sorry, are we considering that the new tree would be on the personal property or the private property?
I guess I would, I would prefer to, to, to let Kyle sort of...
I think that's what you were suggesting, so I just, if that's what you were suggesting, and the homeowner is here, do we want to ask the homeowner if she is okay with that?
Want another tree?
Well, so it's a pleasure of the board, we could absolutely do that, or I think we could just delegate to Kyle to find an appropriate solution.
The homeowner is actually sitting in the audience. I think it makes sense to ask her what she feels about that idea.
If Kyle recommends this as an option, would you be willing to host this tree? Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Kyle has one more thing to add.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Kyle.
If I could add just one more thing. The town invested last year in the MVP tree study. And one of the products of that study was a suggested tree planting list. So in your motion, if you care to, I would ask that you not specify a tree type, and we could utilize the tree list to determine what the best type of tree is, depending where we plant it.
So since you're here, and since Chris started this conversation, which I'm glad you did, if there was some sort of additional in-kind, so $1,000, replacement of this tree, some other in-kind, what's the in-kind thing that you would find most valuable for the benefit of the Westford trees?
So I'd have to review the list.
You want to think about it, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't say off the top of my
It might be placing more trees as opposed to reserving.
So for example, you wouldn't plant a pine tree or a red oak, which is what was there.
You guys are talking two different things.
Yeah, I'm basically just asking, in general, before we come to a conclusion on the bounds of this in-kind piece of the penalty, I just want to get your input. Sounds like you like the idea of replacing this tree. Is there, do you like the idea of more trees available? Do you like the idea of being able to have potentially be a vendor when tree work emerges that the town requires? What strikes you as something that makes the most sense, most manageable? Has the most benefit?
I think probably the replacement tree option makes more sense.
Okay, so if we were going to recommend other, further in-kind, beyond just this one tree, we might say some additional number of trees that you would work with to specify, okay.
Yeah.
The value of tree.
Trees are governed with values, right? So I'd rather say number of trees, I think really is, and if I'm the contractor, what is my exposure here? So I think there's a limit around the money, and then what trees that buys is what it buys.
Okay.
Death of a thousand cuts. I just think the two fines and replacement of that tree should be it.
I think there's an argument that that sends a strong enough message. We could also do something more. I also be uncomfortable with having it get too big, because I think we've sent the message, so.
Well, I think you said it was $1,000 for oak sapling?
Yeah.
So that alone, one tree there, that's an entire fine.
Plus, I got an estimate from our arborist to install it, and that was about $500. So a single tree would be about $1,500.
Okay, so if we're going to bring this home, it would be the cash fine for each location, and one tree, which we think is going to have a value of $1,500 planted. Is that, do we feel like that's a good outcome?
Do you want money for watering, or do you want the homeowner to have to water?
How's the homeowner feel about that?
You okay with watering a tree?
Business person with three little children who are all under eight, so if you come look at my yard, you'll see this thing. I'm committed to that.
Can we specify with you, Kyle, whatever solution we come up with has a suitable watering plan? And you've worked that out with either the vendor or with some other, by some other means?
Yes.
So I think the motion, then, would be that for each of the two sites in question, we would assess the $500 fine, plus we would ask that a suitable tree, both by type and location, be planted to replace the healthy tree that was taken down.
At Nutting Road.
At 15 Nutting Road, with an estimated value of $1,500 bucks, with the tree planted. Does that sound like where we are? Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have one final comment.
Okay, please.
I'm wondering if there's something that the town can do to educate homeowners about the public shade tree, and not to assume that simply because the tree looks like it's on your property, that it is on your property. And, you know, one of the things we've done in the past is, you know, when we've enclosed, like, enclosures or flyers when we're sending out notices to the town, whether tax bills or whatever. And I'm just wondering if we can do something about education, get something up on our website, and get something out to all the homeowners. Because I really do think that, you know, you said, yeah, of course we own the tree. I am sure you are not alone in thinking that you own your trees.
Yeah.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, so Kristen will think about communicating with the vendor community, slash, in her newsletter notifying homeowners that are reading this, they need to double-check, that scale of thing, okay. Thank you for that, Kristen, okay.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
Kyle, good job. I'll go plot some more.
So next up, we'd like to review the recommendation from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, the CEASC, that Westford adopt the Massachusetts Opt-In Specialized Building Code standard. And thank you for the presentation in our packet. So floor is yours.
Mike, let's meet here. Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, I'm just going to kick it off and then turn it over to Beth and Sue Thomas, who I believe is online. So at our last meeting, we voted to recommend that the town adopt the Opt-In Specialized Building Energy Code. This is above and beyond what Westford currently has to follow, which is called the Stretch Code. And we think there is urgency here because of the benefits. So we think of the town adopting that building code. So we do recommend that it goes to the coming annual town meeting. So that was our recommendation to the select board. We're here to present, and I'll turn it over to Beth and Sue to present.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Do you want the slides?
Yes, please. So we're here to ask you to consider putting a placeholder on the annual town meeting warrant to adopt the specialized opt-in building code that Mike just spoke about. And so we can go to the next slide. I know we have limited time, and we're running a little late. So we'll try and move through this as quickly as possible. And of course, you know, we could put the placeholder on the warrant and come back and talk about this at another point also. So why are we here, asking you to adopt this specialized opt-in code? As you might remember, from our Westford Climate Roadmap presentations, buildings in our town use 58%, or generate 58% of the greenhouse gas emissions. So that's big. And we want to focus on new construction, which really should be the low-hanging fruit here, right? Because it's very difficult to change existing buildings. But when we build a new building, we want it to be as renewable as possible. So, and that's what this specialized opt-in code focuses on, is new buildings. So we want to minimize building use and operating costs for both tenants and owners. We believe that this specialized opt-in code is aligned with the financial incentives that are coming from the state and the federal government, which would help builders and homeowners out. And we think if we move ahead and adopt this new greener code, we will be more likely to get additional grants from the state in the future. Our neighbors in surrounding communities are adopting the code. We have 30-plus communities in Massachusetts which have already adopted this specialized opt-in code, including Chelmsford, Acton, and Carlisle. And it's consistent with state goals also. So we have three levels of building codes, municipal building codes. The base code, which I believe right now is approximately 50 communities in the state have the base code. The stretch code is the code that we have here in Westford now. And we adopted that in 2013. And I think, as everybody here knows, it had a major rewrite in 2023. So we upgraded that stretch code to a much tighter building code last year. The specialized opt-in code is the code that I told you 30 other communities have adopted, and that's the one, the greener code, that we're asking you to put on the annual town meeting warrant in the spring. So the next slide goes over what the specialized code adds. An add is, you know, is a very specific word here, because this specialized code doesn't change all of the existing, it doesn't change the existing stretch code, it just adds to it. And the biggest area where it adds is that when a builder comes to town and decides to put in a new building, and they decide that new building is going to have fossil fuels, this is a new building that will be around for the foreseeable future. If they decide they're going to stick with fossil fuels, which is against all of the incentives that are being provided right now, they would need to pre-wire for future electrification. So when another homeowner buys the home and wants to change, it's much more difficult to wire at that point. So we're saying, in the construction phase, they need to pre-wire for electrification. Solar, new buildings, again, new buildings that use fossil fuels are going to be required to have a certain amount of solar energy. And then these two categories, large homes and large multifamilies, the code is asking for exemplary performance. So the first one is large homes, homes that are over 4,000 square feet. And again, the builder has decided to use fossil fuels in that home. They must be all-electric or certified zero energy. So they need to use solar to offset their energy use. And in large multifamily homes, greater than 12,000 square feet, they must use the passive house pathway, which is a stricter net-zero code, or pathway. So in the question of cost, the cost impact to the town of Westford, and it's probably good news on a night when we were talking about the budget issues, is neutral, there's no cost to the town. The JV Fletcher Library already complies, because the plan is that that would be an all-electric building. Developers, neutral, because there are, you know, thousands of dollars in state and federal incentives in order to follow these guidelines. And for residents who wouldn't need to deal with that, rewiring work should receive energy savings without any additional costs. So in summary, the pre-wiring avoids retrofit. So we picture this as a key action for reducing carbon emissions in our buildings. We have cost savings to the homeowner, short and long term, healthier buildings, and it will position our town for additional grants. Now, I think Sue may want to get involved explaining the next steps. She had researched the bylaw review, which will indicate where within our current bylaws this law should fit. And we do have plans, as a committee, to do additional education and outreach prior to town meeting. And we're lucky there that we have these other 30 neighboring towns that have already gone through this, because they have already gone in front of town meeting to get this approved. They've already put on workshops and classes. And we also can get help from D O E R with that. I don't know, Sue, if you wanted to say anything additional on the next steps.
Yeah, thank you, Beth, that was terrific. I just wanted to say that the exact language, there are two paths we could take with the exact language, either amending the current adoption of the existing stretch code to incorporate the specialized code, or having a separate bylaw that includes adoption of the specialized stretch code separately. There are pros and cons, there are different towns picking different approaches. We would do the research to identify what the best path for Westford would be with the appropriate town staff and state resources.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Beth, thank you, Mike. Questions from the board? I guess there's questions about further exploration, how do we feel about this? And then there's a separate issue about timing, and when does it fit best in the overall march of progress?
Well, I think it's good. I mean, the key word here is it's on new structures, new buildings. So it just adds to it, it improves. One of the things we need to think about, though, is we adopt this as is, and there are going to be changes in the future. And I'd like to ask the question, do you have any sense of what the potential changes might be as we move forward? Are they going to be just tightening the standards and stuff gradually until we reach 2050? Is that the feeling that you get?
I don't know.
Beth, do you want me to take that?
Sure.
So the, as with this, I would expect that the bodies would continue to update code as they have in the past, and that is meant sort of a new version release. The other possibility would be that the next version release, if you want to call it that, would be, I can't really see exactly what they would change. I would think that it would be a minor change at this point, because the big additional change that's on the horizon would be accepting the fossil-free code, and that would be a different step, a different, it's not a version change. It's a completely different code set. So I would not see the state putting the effort into making a lot of changes to this. I haven't heard of them talking about doing it. And if they did, it would be, you know, a version that would take time to develop and be implemented. So it wouldn't be anything in the near term.
Well, they do say, please note that once the specialized code is adopted by a municipality, all future additions, amendments, and modifications are automatically adopted unless the municipality rescends adoption of the specialized code itself. So we are making a commitment.
Correct. And that language is, I'm sorry.
And that's the note from D O E R.
Okay, so we should be aware of that?
We just need to be aware of that, and the good thing is it's on new facilities, new buildings. And I think the ideas are good. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't, you know, make that preparation in new construction. I don't think it's going to impact the contractors, because they're going to pass the cost on. But you have the rebates and stuff that will modify that, so.
Okay, good, Scott.
So there's two questions here, right? So one is, the easy one, does it belong on the ballot? And I think, or the warrant? And the answer is yes, because this should be a town-wide decision. The second question is, does the board support it, or do I support it? And that was why I need to talk to you more, because you could say it's no more cost to construct. And if you believe the Rocky Mountain Institute, you know, that is true. It's actually like $20 cheaper to build electric. If you believe the actual association of home builders, it's about $2,000 more to build. And the single biggest problem we have in this country is housing, and the cost of housing. I'm not convinced it actually creates lower-cost housing. I think it probably creates, at best neutral, which is fine, maybe higher. And if you're putting solar panels on the roof so the building is self-sufficient, that's great. If you're buying off the grid, that's the worst decision you could make, because our power rates are higher than anybody but Hawaii. We actually managed to surpass Alaska of electric power rates. So you do not want to use electric power if you're buying off the grid. So I'm in favor of putting on the warrant, but I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about, you know, some of the externalities here that are assumed to be great, that other sources disagree. And I don't trust anybody's without talking to experts.
Understood, Scott.
So I'm going to follow up on what Scott said. I think all we're deciding tonight is whether or not to put this on the warrant. So I'm going to make a motion that we put this on the warrant. And we can decide, I mean, not decide, and we can talk about and answer all these questions when we actually start to talk about the warrant articles.
So motion's been made, I'd like to have a discussion period, because I think Kristen had an opinion from town staff about the timing and whether this fit best on this upcoming town meeting. So I want to hear from her, but motion made, so do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so before we move to the vote, let's ask Kristen to get her
So, John, your comments are very interesting to me, and especially where you sit as the chairperson of the MBTA Communities, the McMath Committee. I know there are ongoing questions and conversations with town staff of, should this go on, this warrant where we have the MBTA Communities and we have the budget challenges? Do we think that this will complement that in a way? Or should we wait and see how that goes and come back to October? So I don't have a strong opinion either way. I'm still collecting information. I just learned of the CEASC recommendation, you know, a few days ago, because their meeting was the other night. So I just want to make sure that the board has that in their thought process of what does the timing look like? And I know to meet our roadmap goals, we would most likely want to couple it with MBTA Communities, right? And then have those new buildings, you know, meet that code. Just want to make sure that we have a fruitful discussion of that topic.
Yeah, I think I'm also concerned that we're setting it up for success. So I agree with this and support it, but I want to make sure we've just thought through what the dynamics of that town meeting is and make sure it's a fit.
But we can always take it off.
We can, and the motion has been made and seconded, so if it's a pleasure of the board to go ahead and vote, we can. I guess just awareness that I want to let the discussion continue and then come back and say, we think it's a fit or not fit.
I agree, if town staff comes back and says, hey, look, you know, we really think this or whatever, then I'm more than willing, you know, always willing and, you know, want to hear what town staff's opinion is. So yes, the discussion should definitely continue, but I'm also mindful that we close the warrant at our next meeting.
Yeah, okay. So other, we're in the discussion after it's been made and seconded, any other?
I think John has something.
Well, I just say, you know,
First John, and then?
The suggestion was made to make it, put a placeholder in there.
Yeah.
I know that when we're looking at the MBTA thing, that has to be this annual town meeting.
It has to be, and it's a big deal.
And it's a lot of information there.
Yeah.
And I know the suggestions make a And I know the suggestion is make a placeholder for now, we could do that, and then make the decision later.
Okay.
But I did attend the CEASC, the meeting, and I was accused of kicking the can down the road, but that's beside the point. I did mention that possibility of moving it to the, and I ask the question of, how urgent is this? I mean, I think we need to go forward with it, we need to pass it. The question is, is this a target of opportunity, or are we going to miss something if we don't do it?
And that's what we're trying to evaluate as town staff of, yes, 31 communities have, but we have 351 communities, how might this change in the future? How might this affect some other things? So we'll be better prepared for your next meeting.
Absolutely. Worthy of the thought, and we had another question or another comment.
So, Sriman from the CEASC Committee, and this is further to what John mentioned a few minutes back, that say we put it up, and that was a question which we discussed even in the committee, that we put it in the upcoming meeting, and for whatever reasons, because budget is going to be a big discussion in this meeting, right? And for whatever reasons, because of emotions, et cetera, this motion does not get passed. So do we have to wait for two years, one year, before we come back with this, or we can come back in the next meeting, or how does that work?
It's not a zoning bylaw, so I believe you can come back in the next meeting, but we will double-check that.
Okay. So that was the only thing, Kristen, which was a gray area, but other than that, I think we are all light on this.
Okay. Thank you. And just to ask for your understanding, two of what most communities are finding, the most controversial items that have come before any town meeting recently are the two things we absolutely are going to do in the town meeting already. And if we collectively think we're going to better serve the interests of this article by waiting, we'll have that discussion with you. But it's in the offing that there may be an argument, or there may not, but there could be an argument that we're better serving accomplishing this goal by not throwing it in the middle of the two biggest issues that communities are struggling with right now. Okay. Any other comments or discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor of putting it on the warrant?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our eight o'clock item.
Doing well tonight, Tom.
I had a very good record until tonight.
He's taking a breath there, yeah.
Old-new business, we have one item, which is discussion of private well PFAS testing pilot project. I'm really excited about this project. We've been talking about it for a while, so I'm glad that this is coming up before us today.
Sure. So this evening, we have Ray Dick, your Health Director, on the line. She and I and Mark Warren have worked over the course of the past few weeks to really flesh out a private well PFAS testing program. Your board authorized a certain amount of dollars to do that, and I think we're ready to move forward and implement, but we want to make sure that we're reviewing the plan with you and taking in any comments or questions that you have, and then away we go, hopefully. So Ray and Mark, I believe you're on the line, and feel free to start the presentation.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having me on. My name is Ray Dick. I'm the Health Director with the Westford Health Department. So as you're aware, tonight we're requesting approval of our proposed drinking water well testing project for PFAS. Back on June 6 of 2023, this board did approve upper funding for up to $20,000, in which case it would cover testing, water testing for 50 household-eligible applications. So tonight, in your packet, you can see that we put our proposal, application, tried to think of all questions folks might have regarding results, where those end up, testing that's not available, and certainly our PFAS education products. And we also added the application here, some PFAS education, and we're happy to answer any questions. I will also say that we've been working with our G I S department to create a layer here for the Water Department, and been working closely, again, as Kristen mentioned, with Mark Warren.
Thank you, Ray. And I think you did a great job in the packet of laying this, laying out this program. John?
Ray, have you considered how you're going to proportion these 50 tests? Because there are different, you've got about eight different areas out here, and are you considering any kind of proportionality as far as so many, based on the number of wells in the area, that says, in this area, we would target so many, so that we get a spread around the community, not a first-come-as, you know, first-served type of thing?
Yeah, so speaking with Mark Warren at the Water Department, and certainly our G I S coordinator, we did look at the different quadrants, and certainly where the concentrations of wells, there's about 2,000 wells that we're aware of here in the community, about 25%. So we were figuring anywhere between 10 and 12 wells per quadrant to get an idea, certainly understanding that, you know, some are much more concentrated than others. What we would do is set up a general email box. We would open the program up for 30 days, and whether we get 40 applications or 2,000 applications, we would certainly look in who was applied first, and then make a decision with the Water Department as to how we're going to spread that around in each quadrant.
Yeah, I think it'd be informative to us if you did it proportionality, so that you have a good idea in each quadrant or each area that you have. You have, like I said, about eight areas. As to where the PFAS problems might be, and it'd also be fair to the homeowners. You might get, most of them coming from one area, and I'd like to see it spread around, if that's possible.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. Certainly want to be fair, and we want to get a good representative of if there is any PFAS contamination. Yes.
And one more thing, on your forms, there are two things you talk about. On the first, the proposal procedure, testing not eligible, and you have irrigation wells. Well, a lot of homeowners have both drinking water and irrigation coming off their wells. So you might want to consider saying wells that are solely used for irrigation, because...
That was the intent, so we can change the language.
That was the intent. And the same thing with your form, this well is used for private drinking water, not irrigation. Well, that's, you know, so there should be something that says that...
Solely irrigation.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to use for...
Not solely or only. Yeah, sure.
It's used for private drinking water, period. Or well, not solely for irrigation, that sort of thing. So that would help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yeah, I think, Ray, I think it was very well put out, so I think you'd like a motion to, do you want a motion to approve the plan?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous. Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Board reports and updates.
The Monuments Committee, you know, we had a motion through more criteria, that sort of a thing. Since that time, they've reached out to the D I committee, Historical Commission, and to the Town Museum to get input on, you know, people eligible for that. I think that when we brought this committee or established it, it was to receive input from interested parties and stuff. It wasn't really to go out and search for classes and stuff. Getting into criteria, we had to consider just how detailed and what we would put in the criteria. So I think they're reaching out now to committees that have that interest, and we'll see, because there's some things in the works that would satisfy, I think, your concerns, that, I mean, you know, I think you would want to point out. So we might want to consider that at a future meeting, whether we want to change that charge or if that's going to be good enough. Because, you know, if you start trying to establish criteria high detail.
Right.
And I know in that project to, for the tours of the cemetery, they've done the Revolutionary War, you know, where you can do that code and find out where they are. They're going to move on, and they're probably going to cover the War of 1812, Civil War. It's going to be a progression of doing that, never identify, you know, a lot of folks that were involved in that. So it's just some work underway.
Okay.
So I think we might want to consider that in the future.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. So I think I understand it's, do they basically do a call to people who may have an interest in representing diversity, and some of the other concerns have been raised? Or do we actually want to change the charter?
Well, you start looking at the history of the town, there's quite a bit there.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, let's plan to find a good spot for that, Kristen, in the future meeting. Other board reports? Okay. Town manager's report.
All right. So very briefly, just wanted to provide the board and the members of the public with an update where we are with a proposed firearms bylaw. It's certainly not forgotten. The Land Use Department has been feverishly working with legal and the Planning Board to come up with draft language for a proposed firearms bylaw that we believe is substantially different than the bylaw that was brought to town meeting in October, so would not require the two-year wait and hold. The Land Use Department is currently reviewing draft legal notice language, because we want to make sure we have that correct before that goes out. And per my recommendation, and also in speaking with the Land Use Director, the MBTA Community's zoning bylaw is very imperative right now. That does not discount how important a firearms bylaw is. We heard the community, we know that that is important as well. We feel that putting out a legal notice at the end of January or early February would then kind of put that time limit on, as we've discussed before, that any application that comes in, if a bylaw is passed, has to revert back to that timeframe, that we would probably start the public hearing process in early April and aim to have a May or June, early June, town meeting, thinking that we would like to have it outside to accommodate the number of residents that we believe would want to be attending at that point in time. So just, again, wanted to provide the board with that update of what we're thinking in terms of timelines, assurances in terms of getting that legal notice posted. We do need to get a notice from the Planning Board to the Select Board. Select Board goes back to the Planning Board that, yes, you can start the public hearing process. That's part of the state checklist as well. So again, it's not being lost on us at all. The Land Use Department and Planning Board are working very carefully on the language, and we'd like to bring something forward to public hearing process in April for a May or June town meeting.
And the notification would likely come, I think you mentioned already, the end of this month?
End of January, early February. We're still working that out with council.
That sets the...
That sets the line, yes.
Okay. Any questions about that? Yeah, I think we've talked about it, it's a good approach, I think. In correspondence, we asked about Red Hat. Maybe just, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I can. So at your last meeting, we reviewed a letter from Red Hat that they will not be redoing their lease in Westford as of May of 2025. I've reached out to Red Hat both via email and phone call and have not heard back, so I continue to try to push and get a contact with them. I've reached out to the person that they listed in their letter. Also, we are getting some questions from residents, June McMorro specifically, related to have they fulfilled their obligations related to the tax increment financing agreement. To be honest, I have not had the capacity this week to review that, but I will be reviewing it with both Town Council and the Assessor, and hope to have some information to the board in the next week or two.
Good, thanks. Any other questions about that? Any other questions about, was there any else in correspondence?
No. It was just a Fios TV programming change, which seems to happen very frequently.
The, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of correspondence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll entertain...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Westford.